Good evening. My name is Tim Kalen. I am Vice Chair of the Board of Selectmen. This is open meeting of the North Grove Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely. Consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth. To suspend public gatherings and as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law. To have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which is referenced at the top of our posted agenda for this meeting. Allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded. So that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. This meeting is being conducted remotely using the Zoom conferencing application. The agenda notes and various means by which the meeting can be viewed. Connect to Zoom via webinar link, connect to Zoom via phone. View live stream by YouTube link, watch local cable access channels 30 on Verizon, 192 on Chart. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you. Take care not to screen share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Now permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting meetings. I will introduce each agenda item and its speaker. After the speaker concludes the presentation, I will invite board members to offer their comments, questions and motions. Please raise your hand to be recognized and hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you. If members wish to respond to other members, please request to do so through the chair. Each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Just so we could be sure that we have that everybody's connected and we can hear everybody just like do a roll call. Right now. Leslie Rutan? Scott Rogers?
Present.
Jason Perrow? And just to know Julian Hirsch is not present tonight. She is. Not going to be attending the meeting this evening. Now permit me to confirm that all reporters and listeners hear me. Members when I call you, staff, when I call your name, please respond in affirmative. State each staff member's name. Becca Meekins? Scott Chapantier?
Present.
Jason Little?
Present.
Chief Liver?
Present.
Chief Parenti?
Present.
And John Corder?
Present.
We will confirm additional participants for their respective agenda items at the time they are brought into the meeting. That concludes that. Thanks for your patience. I noticed I did read something that I wasn't supposed to, so thanks for the chuckles.
An I state your name moment?
Yes. So first item on the agenda is approval of the March 8th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Scott.
I move that we approve the March 8 meeting minutes.
In a second. So moved by Scott, second by Leslie. Meetings are approved, minutes are approved. So we are after the hour of.
Oh, Mr. Chair, we just need to vote on it.
Oh, sorry. And just a vote to approve the meetings, meeting minutes. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Jason Perrow?
Aye.
And I, Tim Kalen, vote aye. We are after the hour of 7:00 PM. Next on the agenda is Jeffrey McCarthy DBA Yogi's Hip Hoagies. To consider an application for a common particular license as submitted by Jeffrey. McCarthy DBA Yogi's Hip Hoagies for premises located at 309 Main Street.
And I am promoting Mr. McCarthy now.
Thank you. Hi Jeff, welcome to the meeting.
Hello, thank you.
So you're just applying for a particular license for Yogi's Hip Hoagies?
Correct.
And could you just tell us a little bit about the business and what you need the license for?
Sure, we're actually taking over the Texas Bobby Company. We have a food truck, custom food truck that's actually backed up to the front door. We're not going to have any customers inside. I'm the only employee. We're going to use his kitchen to prepare all the food and then fill the truck and we'll supply out of the truck. We do have his picnic tables on the other side of the building. Cleaned up that area and painted everything, but we're not going to have any, any customers inside.
Do you plan on having customers in the future?
Inside?
Yeah.
No, it's a short lease. We have a six month with a six month extension because they're trying to sell the property.
Gotcha.
So we're only here till about September 1. If we go into, you know, we'd probably go as far as December, we probably wouldn't be open January and February.
Yeah, it's tough, tough season for, for a food truck.
Right.
And. Chief Liver, did you have any concerns?
No, Mr. Jeff.
Thank you. Any questions from, from the board members? Leslie?
Yeah, hi. Thank you very much for being here. Jeff? Or you go by Jeffrey?
Jeff, please.
Yeah, okay. So I'm sorry, so what do you serve? What will you be serving? What? Give us some details about that.
They're custom hoagies. We cook all our own meats. We cook our turkey, ham, roast beef, handmade meatballs, turkey balls, veggie balls. Chowder, chili, everything is made from scratch, but we'll have our top 10 and then you can make your own. We'll have pulled pork and everything, so it's, it's a custom hoagie sandwich.
Very nice, very nice. As far as where the truck is located, I noticed, like you said, that it's parked in front of the front door. And I did notice that, is it because there's a, well, actually a few reasons maybe. There's a cord for power kind of strung around down toward the, the front door so that you have power in the truck. Is that?
No, I've had probably 20, 30 people from the town to say turn it so people will see the awning towards the street and everything. And the advertising on the other side of the truck would never be seen. So this, this way here, they're both seen. We're probably going to close off that entire side. We'll put cones and chains out there so no one will even pull into that side. And we'll divide the other driveway because it gets wide enough that you could have two lanes. So it's more visual and that cord is actually not for power. That's actually LED lights that I ran in the front and around the truck. So it would glow at night.
Okay, yeah. And I figure the placement too is good for advertising because people could, as opposed to having the truck on the side of the building, you get the advertisement. On both sides, people coming both ways on Route 20.
Right.
And also you have the use of the front door then, right back into the truck, I'm assuming. Just kind of thinking about these things as I drove down the, down the street. So I thought I'd just kind of confirm with you, but. Thank you very much for wanting to do that there.
Thank you.
Use of that spot. Thank you.
Thanks, Leslie. Any other questions or comments? Nope. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Vice Chairman? Okay. I move the board vote to approve the application for a common victor license as submitted by Jeffrey McCarthy DBA Yogi's Hip Hoagies. For promises, promises, yes, promises. Premises located at 309 Main Street with the condition that the licensee receives satisfactory inspections by the building, fire and health departments.
Seconded.
Moved by Leslie Rutan, seconded by Scott Rogers. Now roll call vote. Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Jason Perrow?
Aye.
And Tim Kalen votes aye. So approved. Thank you very much, Jeff, for coming in. Best of luck with, with, with all that you're doing over there. That's a great location.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good luck. Thanks.
Good night, everyone.
Take care.
All right, we are after the hour of 7:05. Next on the agenda is Bill Frayer, Town Auditor.
Hello?
Hi, Bill. How you doing?
Good. It was funny. I was hearing everything and then as soon as you introduced me, it rebooted. I don't know. Anyway.
That's because you changed from an attendee to a panelist, so now you're special.
Thank you. This is different.
Yeah, yeah, it certainly is.
You're probably used to it by now, but still seems very strange to me.
Yeah, we're trying.
I'll just dive in. Jason, were you gonna?
Yeah, let me see. I just got, it should be up on the screen now.
Yeah, it is. Okay. So just from an overview standpoint, I like to make sure people know the highlights. I know everyone can read, but I'll go through it. There were no audit adjustments other than the things that were required to do to. Create the financial statements according to GAAP. You have to keep your books according to your budget and what DOR tells you to do. So there are adjustments we have to make. But there were no other adjustments that were required to correct any mistakes or anything. We have to evaluate controls and we did not identify any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. We have to test for the town's compliance with laws and regulations and we didn't find any issues. You know, we would consider reportable conditions on that and the audit report itself was unqualified. Before I get to the last bullet, which is last bullet, it's pretty obvious, but. You know, I just want to say, and I've probably said it before, but just to make sure people don't think this is, you know, all you get is happy talk. I can't make these, some of these statements in other audits that I do. I have had unqualified audit reports. I have had, do have. Reportable conditions. I do have significant deficiencies on some audits. And you know, I do have to make audit adjustments for, other than things that are required to, to adjust to GAAP. I have to correct, you know, issues with the financial, with the records of the town. So, you know, I just want you to know that this, this is not only a good report, but it's also not a report that everyone gets. And that's a credit to the, you know, to the management team and the finance team and of course, Jason in particular, who keeps the, the books. COVID obviously was a major challenge this year, which is why we're doing this so late. We did a lot of work that we don't typically do offsite, offsite. We typically do onsite, but we did it offsite. So, you know, we got through it as we did with all our audits this year, but obviously wasn't the ideal year and looking like next year will be. Maybe back, hopefully back to a normal audit and a normal schedule. So if we can go to the second slide, Jason. We show this every year. These are the. So, you know, you have a six, you know, I don't know if it's quite 60 pages, but you have a large financial statement. And so we try to boil down to a few things that we think are important that bond rating people look at. And that address the biggest numbers in the statement. So of course, your general fund, which is your operating budgetary fund. Is the largest, by far the largest fund in the financial statement. So we spend a lot of time, we'll spend a, a time tonight talking about that. As well as some of the other larger numbers on the balance sheet. This first slide shows the growth over five years of revenues and expenditures. We like to show this because one of the things that the bond people will look at is how is the town growing? Is it growing too little? Is it growing too fast? You know, too little, they start to worry about whether or not you're able to. Maintain what you should be maintaining, whether you're cutting budgets in one area. To fund things that go up every year like salaries and pensions and health insurance, which means you might be cutting maintenance and training and other things that. Be concerned about, you know, and if it's too high every year, they worry about. Whether that's sustainable and, and why the growth is so high. So we like to look at a three to 5% ish, you know, if it's a little below that. It's a little above that. You know, it's not an issue, but we certainly don't want things that are far over or under that. And in any given year, things happen, whether it's a new bond debt service payment. Coming in because of a, of an override, which then increases your expenditures. Or there's a one-time revenue source from a sale of land or a grant that you don't typically get every year. So it, it makes more sense not to focus on the current year or even the current versus prior year, but more of a wider window. And so I, I like to look at the five-year averages and as you can see, both on the revenue side and the expense side. You're right at 4% and that's, you know, almost smack dab in the middle of where you want to be. We've put some notes at the bottom of this to try to point out some of the numbers that were higher or lower. Than normal. So, you know, that explains, as I said earlier, if you have a new, a new debt service payment or. You know, snow and ice, there's all sorts of things that can happen that might drive the number for one year. So it's best to focus on that five-year average. So in terms of the general fund and the revenues and expenses and how those are trending. You're in a very good place on that. Second slide. Our third slide, I guess we're on. So it's important, you know, and again, the bond rating agencies spend a lot of time looking at this, what's your budget and how tight is your budget? And they want to make sure that you're being somewhat conservative in your budgetary estimates, which means. They like to see you coming in over the revenues, under the expenses. Because there are going to be those inevitable bad years. There are going to be recessions. There are going to be times when things are going to get tough. And if you don't have a little bit of a cushion. Like this year to work through some of the issues with COVID, you could get into trouble very fast. So. Those first two rows, two columns, sorry, of numbers show. The budget actual for the expenses and for the revenues. And as you can see, again, focusing on the five-year average. Revenues are 1.6% average to budget, expense, expenses are 2.1. That, those mean favorable variances. Revenue is higher, expenses lower. And that's again, a good place to be. You don't want to be too tight on those because you won't have room to navigate. Your revenues this year because of COVID were, you know, barely exceeded your budget. But you were very conservative, cutting expenses on the expense side. So you had a decent. Favorable variance on the expense side. And, and just like we talked about in the last slide, you don't want things to be up in the five to 6% area every year. Because, you know, people are going to be thinking your budgets are too conservative. So again, I think, you know, that 1.6 and 2.1, it is almost, you know, exactly spot on for where you want to be. So that's again, another good thing. We also look at, oh, sorry, can we hop back, Jason? Thanks. The last two columns, we show the free cash that you're using. And we've talked about this a lot, but I think one of the best decisions you've made, and since you've done this, I've tried to push other. Clients to sort of look at this is to have a consistent use of free cash for the operating budget. You know, you're always going to regenerate, even in, in a really bad year, you're going to regenerate a certain amount, probably of free cash. So if you build in a reasonable amount like you did the 675, even in a bad year, you're. You're more than likely always going to regenerate 675 if you use all your free cash, your favorable budget variances will regenerate that. So that's good because otherwise you've created a structural problem in your operating budget. And then the excess free cash that you might have, when you have those good years, it's higher. When you have those bad years, it's lower. That can then be used for one-time things, capital or other items. So again, I just think that was such a great decision to make. And you've kept that 675 consistent. And as you can see, the capital other has gone up or down based on how much you regenerate from the kind of year you have. So that's, that's a, you know, that's a plus and that's something the bond rating agencies, they not only like the numbers, but they like the fact that you've adopted a policy and you're following that policy. There are too many towns that are reactive. Oh, we have all this free cash. Let's add something, you know, to the operating side. And then you don't have the free cash next year, but it's built into the budget. Now what do we do? So it really was a good decision. Next. Thanks. Again, the bond rating people spend a lot of time talking about reserves. They like to see towns have something in reserve because. You know, for anybody who's been around long, long enough, and I've probably been around longer than anyone. You know, I've seen the, the real bad spells where it can get really difficult. As a matter of fact, when I first came to North Grove. You not only did not free cash, you had a large free cash deficit. In part because of some, I guess, mistakes on the accounting side. And it was a really bad hole to have to dig out of. We're, we're talking a long time ago before anybody who was there now was there, except for me. So this tracks your free cash and stabilization, which is what the, the bond agencies like to look at. And they throw around an eight to 12% number. You might hear some lower numbers or wider ranges like eight, you know, five to 15, 10 to 15. But I think eight to 12 is probably the more, most common. Amount used. And as you can see here, we, we like to show it both as the percentage of the budget. But then in the spring, you use some of that for town meetings. So what is it like after you go to town meeting and use that free cash for the next year? And again, because of your policies you've adopted, because of the fact that everybody has been good about. Sticking to those policies once they're adopted, you stayed in that. You know, 8% range in that last column. There's been some years that have been better, better than others, but you've pretty much. Flexed what you use on the capital side to try to stay around that 8%. So again, policies are in place, but they're also being executed and they're also being stuck, you know, stuck to, and that's, that's a good thing. Next. Okay, so we're going to get away from the operating side and the general fund and, and talk about what. GAAP calls the entity-wide statements, which not just has your fund-based activity. That's similar to the way your books are kept, although a little different. And this loads in everything. Your fixed assets on the asset side, your OPEB liability on the liability side, your pension liability on the liability side. Your accrued sick and vacation for employees. There's a lot of things that. Aren't on the fund-based statements that come on to the entity-wide statements or the government-wide statements. And again, we've talked about all this, the OPEB liability. I know everybody gets frustrated with it because as you can see from this five-year trend, it's gone up and down. You know, from 34, five years ago, up to 42, down to 34, up to 36. Part of the problem here is that this whole concept of disclosing the OPEB liability, which is the. Retire, the town's liability for retiree health insurance. Is subject to a lot of actuarial assumptions. How long people are going to live? How much health insurance is going to increase? What you can make on your trust fund, what the investment rate of return is going to be over the long term. So there's a lot of assumptions. And those assumptions not only change over time, but because this is new. Assumptions that were used early on in the first couple of years are now. Being refined and there, there was a reaction to, you know, maybe we've been a little too. Aggressive or overly rosal, you know, optimistic on the investment rate of return, long-term investment rate of return. So they've knocked that stuff down a little bit. Health insurance costs have come down a little bit. So the projection of future health insurance costs have gone down a little bit. So you have a lot of stuff going up and down. That really has nothing to do with what you've done. It's just the actuarial assumptions over time have changed. So you just kind of, you just kind of get a ride with it. Realize that you're doing the right thing in that second column, which is establishing a trust fund. And putting in, you know, a half a million or more into that every year. And watching it grow both from your contributions and what it's making. And again, when something's in a trust fund and invested, there are going to be probably some bad years. But again, you're looking at the very long-term view here to say, yeah, we might have a year where we actually lose money. On our investments, but over the long haul, we should be making, you know, five, six, seven percent. On, on this money over time. And then the last call on the pension liability, as we know, this is completely out of your hands. It's the regional retirement system and you have. I guess they have. Opted to fully fund this by 2036. And even though it's growing, the way that they're amortizing this unfunded liability through your annual assessments, there will be a point. Where this drops significantly and every year it's going to drop. Once it starts dropping, it's going to drop every year and at some point drop every year significantly. There is an amortization schedule they have. There, you know, if the state doesn't allow them to stretch it out anymore, they will get there by 2036. And at that point, there's talk about how much your assessments would go down. And would that be wise to then switch that differential over to the OPEB liability? Once you're not funding this additional amount in your pension assessment to deal with the. Differential over to the OPEB liability, once you're not funding this additional amount in your pension assessment to deal with the. Um unfunded liability that all these pension systems were allowed to build up. Um so that, you know, it's all the right stuff. It's just these are very long-term things that you have to kind of look at. Next slide is um your debt. Again, because it's one of the big numbers on the balance sheet, it's certainly something that the the bond rating agencies focus on. Um you've always had a reasonable amount of debt for the size of your budget. Um it will go up and down as town, as town meeting approves projects. This includes not just the operating side, but the water and sewer side. Um so. You have gone down over the last five years from twenty-nine million, which twenty-nine million wasn't a bad number at that time, and you're down to twenty-one million. In inevitably, there'll be big projects coming, and that will go up again. But what they like to see again is towns reinvesting and having. The ability, you know, to borrow, to pay it back, but not to be borrowing for all sorts of little things. I have towns. That have trouble funding, unlike you, because of your free cash policy. You know, they have trouble even funding vehicles. And so a lot of even the vehicles go on five-year lease purchases or state house notes um. The good thing about your numbers, not only are they, you know. Overall, in a good place in terms of dollars, but you're really not tapping your borrowing. Um which you were at one point, you know, maybe ten, fifteen years ago, but you're not tapping that. For anything other than the really big projects. And so that's a, that's a plus. And then the final slide is um fixed assets. And again, I show this because, as you can see. It's it's really the biggest number um in your financial statements. So this includes everything. When I say. Fixed assets or capital assets. It's buildings, land. Roads, all your infrastructure, water and sewer pipes, you know, everything, plus vehicles, equipment, that sort of stuff. The important thing again is that they want to see the gross number, which is just the actual value of the actual. Historical cost of these assets going up, because that says to them. Uh this town has the capacity to continue to replace things as needed and add things as needed. Um so you've gone from a hundred and fifty-six million, hundred and fifty-seven million. Uh up to a hundred and seventy-five million over the last five years. Average of six point one percent reasonable growth. There may be times when that'll be a lot higher, because you may have a couple of big school projects down the line. Um hopefully way down the line, I'm not sure. Um and then on the other side, it shows it of depreciation. And again, those numbers can kind of go up and down, but. You in a little skeptical, sorry about that first number. Uh the thirty-three point three percent is probably incorrect, but. The other numbers, the three point eight, you you just, you know, it's going to come down in the years that you don't have large projects. Because you have so much infrastructure, the roads, the water sewer, that are getting depreciated every year. That's okay, as long as at some point you'll have jumps because of these big projects. Um so po- again, apologize for that that set of numbers, but the seventeen to twenty. Changes um. You know, are kind of the normal types of numbers that you like to see. So overall, this paints a really good picture of where the town is. And as I've said earlier tonight and said every year. It it's so critical. You you know, you have done so well in. Being presented by management, these policies and procedures that are based on best practices, you've. Listened and been willing to adopt them. They've been enforced, they've been kept to, you haven't done any short-term. Things that say, well, we can't do that this year. You've really stuck to your plan. And I think that that is what makes so much of this so smooth for you, and it is not the case. Everywhere, so. That's kind of uh overall. Anybody have any questions?
Or uh Leslie? You're muted, Leslie.
Sorry, uh thank you very much, Bill. It's always a great explanation. I appreciate you being here tonight with us. Um so getting back to the OPEB liability, um you feel that right now. Based on everything else going around and the different variables and the moving parts that we're doing. Um a good job in terms of the amount of money that we're contributing to the trust fund.
Yeah, I thi- I mean, I think you're you're doing, you know. More than than a lot of towns are doing. Um you've been progressive and um. You know, in the long run, that's going to help it. You know, not only keeps your um liability down, the more you put in. But your oh, your actuarial assumptions are more favorable. As that trust fund builds, so you know, kind of, it's kind of a. Double benefit when, you know, when some of these assumptions can change because your trust fund is getting up there. Um that also lowers your liability, not just because of the five hundred thousand you put in there. So I think going, you know, with the constraints you have and all the budget. Um you know, you're you're being pulled in five different directions, ten different directions. Um I think you're doing a good job. Um you know, I have some clients that haven't put a penny in, and that, you know, over time, they will regret that.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other comments, Jason?
Oh, I'm I'm sorry to interrupt. I just wanted to to make the comment that I just looked up the two thousand sixteen statements and that thirty-three point three percent is correct. What that, what that is, is the Lincoln Street School coming online that that year. Um you know, while it was construction in progress, it wasn't being depreciated, and it dropped in that year and came online. So that's, that's what's behind the. Higher than usual increase that year, and that's typical of a, you know, like Bill was saying, it's typical of a large project being completed. So that that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Jason. That's what I figured, but thanks, thanks for for taking the time to to have that at your fingertips and written. And mention that. Um. Anybody else? John?
If I may, I I just want to publicly acknowledge Jason Little, our finance director. Uh he's wearing two hats here. Uh the clean audit is Jason as our town accountant. Uh and then as a member of the financial team. Uh Jason was involved in uh, as were several of the board uh members, particularly Leslie and uh Jason Perro. In in creating these policies that have served us so well, and really, it's the discipline of the of the advisory boards and committees like. Uh like the Board of Selectmen, appropriations and financial planning. To to have that discipline to stick with those policies. And uh nowhere did that come uh back in a positive way stronger than in fiscal twenty-one. When all heck was breaking loose everywhere and cities and towns were slashing budgets, they couldn't put budgets together. And we, following our policies, we knew exactly what we were going to bump, exactly what we're going to postpone, uh what we had for reserves. And we went off without a hitch, and ultimately we wound up uh giving significant uh uh. Uh tax relief in fiscal twenty-one to our residency. Average single-family home tax bill went down sixty-five dollars. And again, it's just a success story showing that, you know, having good discipline. Um good policy, but then the discipline to stay with it. Uh allows you to handle and manage uh difficult um financial periods, because as Bill Ferrer mentioned. They will come. I've gone through three of them in Northborough already. Uh over the eighteen years that I've been here. So uh so that discipline is just absolutely critical. Um but again, I really just want to acknowledge Jason uh on a day-to-day basis, um done better. And uh as far, as far as the budget and the management team. Uh can't imagine doing all this without him, so uh I just want to make sure that he gets a proper credit.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Leslie.
Yeah, I wanted to thank Jason, too. I was almost going to say the exact same thing John did when he first started out, but we we really very, very much appreciated. I don't, I don't know how you do it. It's. It's amazing. And then obviously, working with Bill and and everything. Having to be put together and assimilated to provide this kind of document for our board, but it's just so much work over the year. Um I just very, very much appreciative of it and working with John, of course, and. Becca in any capacity. I think it it's really very, very impressive. We really very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Bill. The the presentation was was terrific. I I I find it very helpful to hear. Um comparisons to some of your other clients. Um sometimes you you. You live in a bubble and you in in you don't realize what's going on outside of of uh you your boundary, so it's. It's helpful to hear um. You know, that that everybody else or other communities aren't as aren't as fortunate as we are to have. Um the the financial management policies that, you know, John mentioned that Leslie and Jason Perro were were part of. And then having the team and the people like like John and and Jason Little to. To to navigate um when we do hit bumpy waters and and having everything in place so that the. The town comes out whole on the other side, so it's helpful to hear that. Thank you.
Sure.
Um. Anybody else? All right, perfect. Thank you. Thanks a lot, Bill. Very much appreciated.
Okay, bye.
Thanks, Bill.
Bye.
Bye, my listen.
Uh so we are. After the hour of seven fifteen, and next on the agenda is a joint public hearing with the Board of Selectmen in the Appropriations Committee. Uh for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two proposed budget.
And all present members of the appropriations have been promoted.
Very good.
Thank you, Chief. Um. Just want to go through the um. Or first ask um Rick from the Appropriations Committee um to call into session the the Appropriations Committee.
We go. All right, my name is Rick Neber. I'm the vice chair and currently the acting chair of the Appropriations Committee during Elaine Kelly's absence. At this time, I will call our committee to order. And I will have a roll call of our of our members. Do please raise your hand. Do you please say aye when I call your name? George Brinkel.
Aye.
Bob D'Amico.
Aye.
Janice Height.
Aye.
Anthony Petit.
Aye.
All our president accounted for. We do have a forum. So now turning this back to the chairman of the selection for continue the meeting. One reminder, if any of our committee members have any questions or comments, if you'll pass. Uh raise your hand and go through the board of the selectmen, please.
Perfect. Thank you, Rick. Um John, do you have a, do you want to take over?
Yeah, uh first of all, thank you, everybody, for uh coming tonight. Um so this is the required uh public hearing between. Uh joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen and the Appropriations Committee regarding the upcoming uh budget. I just want for folks at home that may want to follow along, the draft of the warrant uh but includes all the budget tables. Is on the town's homepage, uh right under Town News, the top uh top tag that you'll see. That has all of the line items uh that we're going to be discussing uh this evening. So with that, I will share my screen. All right, everybody see that? Okay? All right, so in terms of tonight's uh agenda. Um I want to do a just a brief recap of fiscal twenty twenty-one. As you heard from our auditor tonight, it was hardly a uh. A typical year. Oh, hang on. Um. Chief, is everything okay with the audio, audio and visual?
Yeah, I don't see you, though. Hang on a second.
My camera just went out.
We are seeing the shared presentation.
Okay. Am I back on? You get, everybody see me? Not that you need to see me, as long as you can see my screen. You got to love Zoom, right? Um okay, so as far as the agenda, a brief recap of fiscal twenty twenty-one, because this was not a typical year for us. And it has had major impacts on our budget cycle uh for twenty and preparations for twenty twenty-two. Uh going to talk about the assumptions for fiscal twenty twenty-two uh and uh. Uh I'm going to give, as I always do, uh an overall. View of the general fund budget. In other words, what's the entire budget for the town inclusive of the K to eight schools? Algonquin Regional High School, Assabett Valley, uh Regional High School Assessment, and then general government. Basically, the non-school uh budgets. The point of tonight's meeting is really to focus on. The uh general fund budget highlights. The school department is held at their own public hearings regarding their budgets. This one is for uh is primarily focused on the general fund, but in order to really do that, you need to have the context of. Of how things came, uh how things all fit together, and really the follow-up to our financial trend uh meeting in January of of this year. So just briefly, you heard the auditor again speak to a. Very difficult year we had. So town meeting was delayed by three months uh just by uh logistics, but also. Because of all the unknowns created by uh by COVID and the pandemic. Um but when we did meet, uh we made a couple of decisions as a community. Uh we postponed some capital projects. Because again, as the auditor mentioned, we had a very good free cash policy, and we've been maintaining. Our capital investments in terms of our equipment and infrastructure, so we knew if something bad happened, we could postpone that for one year while we figured out. How to navigate whatever issue we were facing. So we postponed some capital projects. And we also made the uh decision to use an additional three hundred and eighty, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in free cash. To offset at the time, which was anticip- anticipated to be some very significant revenue reductions. Um not the least of which was state aid. We were originally anticipating up to a seventeen percent cut in state aid. Now, we had no idea where things were going to shake out, because the state did not complete their budget, which should have been done. Prior to July first of last year, they didn't complete their budget until December, uh six months late. And it wasn't until late fall that we understood, or the state was able to tell us that they were going to level fund our our local aid. Really, because they could not get their own budget balanced, and all the municipalities across the state had to set their budgets. And they couldn't do that without knowing what their state aid number was. So ultimately, federal funds came in to prop up the state budget. And they uh decided to hold our uh our aid level. Now, what that meant for the town of Northborough was we had a decision to make. We could have held a special town meeting and spent that additional revenue. Uh or we could uh just sit tight, uh not knowing how the rest of the year was going to play out. And uh create some budget capacity, but most importantly, create some tax relief for our residents and our businesses in town. So in November, uh November twenty-third of last year, that's when we set our final tax rate and the final budget was locked in, and we used. The level fund, uh level-funded state aid number. The result of that was that the average single-family home tax bill uh reduced by sixty-five dollars. Now, that's just incredible, because if you remember, we were looking at a two hundred and sixty dollar uh increase. Uh in a typical year, that's what we're looking. So you're talking about a swing from, instead of going up two hundred and sixty dollars, we went. Down sixty-five dollars for the average single-family home. All the tax bills were reduced because, again, we took those revenues from the state and we uh uh short of. Um not having a town meeting and not spending them. The only thing they can be used for, when you go to set the tax rate, is to reduce the impact. That was a phenomenal year for us in terms of being able to be responsive to. Uh what the residents and the businesses were were feeling uh across the board tax relief. Uh that's pretty incredible. So that's really the basis upon which fiscal twenty twenty-two is being uh put together. So all budgets were cut back. Remember, we came in at a one percent budget uh and um. And and so the whole baseline budget started out at a lower pace. So now shift gears and talk about uh leading into fiscal twenty-two. What are the assumptions? Well, when we met back on January fourteenth uh to talk about the financial trend monitoring. Uh we told you at that time that we do not have any intention of uh going beyond the limits of Prop two and a half. Which means we're not using our levy capacity. Uh right now, Northborough has uh three point four million dollars in levy capacity. And basically, that means that we have not taxed our residents and businesses to the limits of Prop two and a half. To the tune of three point four million dollars. So on an annual basis, let's just start with the fact that Prop two and a half is an arbitrary capricious limit on budget growth, right? Um be that as it may, many towns are at that limit, struggling and going for overrides. Several of our neighboring communities have passed overrides in the last couple of years, because they don't have that levy capacity. We have taxed below the limits of two and a half, so we have that levy capacity. But we're not dipping into it, and we're not using it for fiscal twenty twenty-two. In fact, based on the numbers. based on the numbers that Jason and I, Jason Little and I were reviewing uh earlier in the week, we anticipate actually adding slightly to our levy capacity for this budget. The second thing is uh we are going to use the state uh aid number that was uh proposed by the governor. So the only number we have to work with at this point is from the governor's budget, which was released on January twenty-seventh. And uh that has our state aid going up one point six percent. So that's the number we're using in this budget for state aid. On a positive note, um, remember when we created our budget originally and for fiscal two thousand twenty-one, the economy was shut down, I mean, completely shut down. We didn't know how long that was going to last and we didn't know what the impact's going to be. So we took a worst-case scenario uh and we assumed a fourteen percent reduction in our local receipts. We assume we're going to get nothing in hotel, very little, nothing in meals, taxes. Um, but as the economy has opened back up, uh based on what we've seen in fiscal twenty-one, uh, we're increasing our local receipts by eight point seven percent uh because the economy is starting to open back up again and uh we believe that's going to only improve as we move into fiscal two thousand twenty-two. Uh, the fourth bullet here is critical. You again heard the auditor talking about being disciplined about how many one-time revenues you use in your operating budget. So we dipped into our uh our free cash last year um just in case we needed it um to the tune of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars above what we normally do. So that does create a structural deficit. Now, it's fine to do that for one year, but we got off of that immediately from in fiscal in the budget that's being proposed to you this evening. So we're back to the half a million in free cash that we roll forward every year, which roughly one percent of the budget. The additional one-time revenues that we plugged into the budget for twenty-one because we weren't sure what was going to happen, those are out and they've been replaced with recurring revenues, which is what this budget is based upon. Now, I'm gonna talk about a couple that so that's on the revenue side of things. On the expenditure side of things, we are not contributing to OPEB this year. We cannot fit that five hundred plus thousand dollar contribution. Uh, we have made that consistently. One of the first things we did when we got into uh difficulty uh was we decided to postpone that. Now, what that means is in two thousand twenty-three, we need to get back, which is the fiscal year after the one we're talking about tonight. We need to get back to making those contributions and the revenues should be returning. So we're we're seeing the the um economy open back up. Uh, whatever the new normal is, well, should be there in fiscal two thousand twenty-two and that means getting back to uh putting money into our OPEB trust fund. It also means we might be looking at increasing that to make up for the lost time. The other thing is uh we're not going to be contributing stabilization fund. Again, you heard the auditor talk about our reserves. They're roughly at eight percent. Yeah, eight to twelve percent is where they like to see us. Um, the good news is we don't, we're not drawing from our reserves, so we are not dipping into our savings account, but we're also not in a position giving everything else that's going on in the recovering economy to be contributing to stabilization. When things are going well, that's when you put the money away. When they're really, really bad, that's when you draw it out. When they're okay and you can get by on your recurring revenues, which is where we are in two thousand twenty-two because things are improving, but they're not great, uh, we're gonna hold steady. Now, the last bullet here is really the the so we know some, I was gonna say the unknown, but we know some, but we don't know the parameters of how it's going to be used, but federal aid uh that's going to come in to offset pandemic expenses and perhaps some of the impacts of the economic um recession uh that we experienced uh, we're that's playing out. We're gonna talk about that a little bit more, but but that could have a very significant impact on our fiscal twenty-two budget, but in a positive way. So just to cut to the chase, in terms of where are we for fiscal twenty-two, fiscal twenty-two is a level service budget with no significant changes to current services. It is exactly what we told you we were going to put together when we met back in January uh with the financial trend monitoring. Uh, there's three primary factors that are gonna impact us moving forward. Uh, one is the pace and depth of the economy, uh economic recovery. In other words, uh, the success of the of the vaccine, does it get rolled out? Does everybody get vaccinated? Does the economy open back up? Do we get back to whatever this uh whatever this new normal is going to be? The second is the whole service delivery model has changed. Uh, we're doing a lot more things online. We've had to add a couple of uh positions to support uh some of the new way that we do things like host our selectmen's meetings. Um, so the those things have to be uh worked in. Um, and uh we're going to continue into fiscal two thousand twenty-two doing things like um uh coronavirus testing in the schools. So these things are all gonna continue to impact us. And then last but not least, again, uh the federal assistance, the money that uh the numbers that are coming through right now are significant and uh and again, we'll talk about those momentarily. But in terms of the big picture, it's a level service budget with the minimum increases that we need to maintain the current services that everybody's enjoying and that that is for general government as well as the K two eight schools and Algonquin Regional High School. In terms of the revenue assumptions, we're looking at a a two point nine percent increase uh for uh taxes. Uh, we project right now that we are going to come in under the levy limit uh for uh local taxes uh by five hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. And that's based to no small uh reason on the new growth and that's the economic development that we have seen around uh town, particularly uh out on Bartlett Street. So when people say, well, you know, where's all that money going? That money goes to reduce and to minimize the tax impacts for all of our residents because basically the bu- the budget base grows. In terms of local receipts, I've already mentioned eight point seven percent increase. Uh, so things are improving and they're going to continue improving. State aid, one point six percent uh under the governor's budget. And then last but not least, we are off the extra one-time revenues in the operating budget. We're back to the five hundred thousand. Uh, the state forecast, uh, I just want to point out on this slide that the state thinks that their revenues are going to go up three point five percent this year. Uh, they held a revenue consensus hearing and the range was anywhere from a couple percent up to eight percent, depending on how fast the economy opens back up, but they agreed on three point five percent. That's the legislature and the governor, and that's what the governor's budget is based upon. So you may ask yourself, well, why is Northborough's state aid only going up one point six percent? And it's very simply because uh three quarters of our state aid comes in the form of educational assistance and that is really based very heavily on um the socioeconomic demographics of your community. We're well-off community and we just don't get that much aid. So um, we're really only going to see one point six percent in uh in state aid growth. This is not unlike what we saw for the last five or six preceding years, even though the economy was doing really well. Our state aid always lagged. Um, this is a uh, this is a profile. You've seen this many times. This is like a thirty-year history of state aid. You heard the uh auditor talk about previous recessions. He was talking back in the early nineties uh when we had negative free cash. Uh, that predates me from being here. But I was here for the recession in uh two thousand three, three thousand four and certainly the one in two thousand ten. But look at the far-right columns. That that cut that we saw that we were anticipating out here in fiscal two thousand one should have looked like this or look like this here, and that's what we assumed. But the federal government came through, provided CARES Act funding and we were held harmless for the worst of the pandemic. Not knowing that and not being sure about that, we assumed the worst and we planned for it and thankfully, it did not materialize. But what you're seeing here at this these top two uh plateau here, the fiscal aid in two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two are pretty much flat. So as our budget grows by three to four percent, as you heard from the auditor, and state aid only goes up one to two percent, that's why you're going to continue to see pressure always on the tax bill. That's why this board and the Appropriations Committee is so focused on making sure that the affordability component is always there. Um, in terms of uh state aid as a percentage of our operating budget, you've seen this graph before through the trend monitoring presentation. In fiscal two thousand and three, state aid was over thirteen percent of our operating budget and today it's just about eight percent. So as a revenue source, it continues to decline. Uh, let's just talk for a minute about this federal assistance. So you're all aware of the coronavirus relief fund uh that was passed and uh one point three million was designated for the town of Northborough. So uh that was extended, that was supposed to expire at the end of last year and it was extended uh to the end of this calendar year, two thousand twenty-one. And to date, we have either spent or committed about five hundred thousand dollars of that. The biggest chunks of that frankly went to the school department for uh testing of students and teachers. We have a weekly testing program that we run for all town staff and all school uh students and uh staff. And that's been how we've been able to uh effectively run our operations. Um, other than that, we've bought a lot of rubber gloves and masks and uh things to deal directly with the impacts of the coronavirus uh response. What we cannot use that money for is general revenue replacement, so we're very limited on how that those funds can be used. Uh, so that is still remaining, that doesn't go away. On top of that, uh, the American Rescue Plan, which the governor, uh, President Biden signed into law on March eleventh, I believe, is a one point nine trillion dollar uh aid package. It has a hundred and thirty billion dollars for local governments. This is money that will come directly to local governments. In other words, unlike the previous coronavirus relief fund, it doesn't pass through the state. It's going to come directly to us. Now, that money, uh, uh, the money will go directly to the state and money will go also directly to the school department that won't flow through the town. So there is money in addition to what we're showing here that will go directly to the school department. So these are pretty staggering numbers and there's very, very little meat around how this is going to work. But uh based on population, the town has uh just just shy of one point five million dollars. It's one point four nine million dollars that's coming directly to us. Now, in this formula through the act, there is money that goes to county government as well, which is considered local government. Or, well, that uh issue is in Massachusetts, we don't have county governments, we abolished them. So in addition to the one point four nine million, according to the Mass Municipal Association's analysis, the town of Northborough will see another two point nine three million dollars. So in total, we're looking at four point four two million dollars. These numbers are staggering to me. What we don't know, well, we do know that a portion of it will be allowed for use as revenue replacement. And uh but you have to go back and look at what you actually lost in revenues. So they're gonna pick a point in time and whatever you lost in revenues after fiscal nineteen, when coronavirus coronavirus hit, you'll be able to re-backfill those with some of these funds. Uh, there's money that can be used for capital projects potentially. Um, there's all sorts of uh things that these funds can be used for. We don't have the detail. We've got broad categories, but as we all say, the devil is in the detail and we're waiting to get additional um guidance from administration and finance at the state level. So the first, the other thing is that this money is supposed to be coming to us in essentially two rounds. We assume it'll be fifty-fifty. The first round is due sometime in uh May or April uh for this year and then uh sometime around uh March of next year would be the second round. So if you're like me from this presentation, ninety percent of your questions should be about that four point four two million dollars. I don't have the answers for you just yet, but what I can say to you is, as we go through and show you the balance of the budget, which is a very conservative level service budget, the numbers in terms of tax impact should only go down with the availability of these funds. So um, let me move forward. Uh, this is our, this is our revenue picture. Um, and this is not inclusive of any federal grant funding. So this is a typical uh pie chart for us. State aid is about two percent of our uh eight percent of our budget. Taxes are about a little over eighty percent, local receipts six point two percent, and then the free cash pretty much stays level at around two point two percent. The other funds are the uh revolving fund transfers in, the EMS revolving fund, the cemetery deed uh money, sales money, that type of stuff. This pie chart, you've seen it, um, it's not changing. So this is the overall, this is the budget and brief table that you'll see in the finished budget document when we put the whole package together for you. Um, if you just go down to the bottom line like I always do, uh, under the general fund, we are looking at a fiscal two thousand twenty-two proposed increase of two point two four percent. That's everything, the K two eight, Algonquin, um, Assabette and the general government uh departments. Uh, the enterprise funds are down at the bottom. We're seeing a rather significant increase in our water enterprise fund because uh our MWRA, the Metropolitan Water Resource Authority, our assessment went up twenty-four percent this year because all of our people in the suburbs are home using lots of water and all of the uh urban centers are empty and the businesses aren't open. And so there's a shift in the one-time shift in the fiscal two thousand twenty-two assessment. But even controlling for all of that or including all of that, if you look at the bottom line here across all funds, general fund and enterprise funds, we're looking at a two point seven three percent increase. In my opinion, a very reasonable increase under the circumstances, particularly given that we are maintaining services and these numbers do not take into consideration um any of those federal funds that might be coming or will be coming. So key budgets, uh, just briefly, uh, the Northbrook K two eight schools, their budget target was three percent. They came in at two point four seven percent. The K two eight schools in fiscal two thousand twenty-two is receiving about six hundred and eleven thousand dollars directly in federal aid through the ESER funds. So that's how they're paying for all all the ex- extra expenses to deal with the impacts of the coronavirus and the pandemic, so social distancing and and all uh all of the uh employee and personnel impacts that they're experiencing. They're able to come in at two point four seven percent. The general government, uh, this is the non-school departments, uh, police, fire, DPW and administration. Uh, we are covering in at uh three point one seven percent. We actually came in at our target that we said we would at three percent and then last week we were told that the um uh Norfolk Agricultural uh uh High School has a student from Northborough going there and under Mass General Law Chapter seventy-four. If a program isn't offered at our regional high school or or our vocational school, they can go anywhere that that program is offered. That is a thirty-eight thousand dollar hit that we just took for that, between tuition and transportation for that one student. Given the eleventh hour that we were at, all of the budgets were done and completed and the budget was done. Um, that's why that point one seven percent, that's that student going to Norfolk Agricultural uh School at thirty-eight thousand dollars. I didn't feel that, I think it was fair or feasible to go back and ask the K two eight schools or the departments to cut their budget again. So that's why we are ever so slightly above the target of three percent. Assabette Valley, good news. If you remember back when in January, they were looking at a potentially a twenty percent increase. Ultimately, it's based on the number of students. We have fifty-nine students going there. Uh, their overall combined operating debt assessment is only going up six point five five percent. So that's good news from the last you heard about Assabette. Algonquin Regional High School, when we initially started our budget planning, we were assuming a potential five percent increase in our assessment because of shifting enrollments. Well, uh, the Regional School Committee voted to release uh five hundred thousand dollars of their excess and deficiency fund, essentially their fund balance and uh to push the assessments down and make them a little bit more reasonable for us. And so overall, uh, their assessment is going up three point two eight percent. Again, that is good news, lower than we originally had uh anticipated for fiscal two thousand twenty-two. In terms of overall expenditures, the pie chart is not moving. Schools are at fifty-nine point nine percent. Uh, town operating budgets are at twenty-one percent. Insurance and benefits, very stable. And then uh look at our debt service. Overall, our debt service is three point one percent of the operating budget. We have made capacity in our in our debt budget for the next big project, which will be a fire station uh building project. That's what's coming around the bend next, along with a uh a some kind of a project for the um uh town office building. So I'm gonna shift gears now. That's kind of the big picture in terms of overall, what do you anticipate uh seeing at town meeting? Overall, general fund up two point two four percent and across all funds, two point seven four percent. We had some things again work out in our favor. Assabette assessment came down, the high school assessment came down, K two eight and general government all came in pretty much where they should have. Uh, so things are lining up. Uh so things are lining up well for us. But now I'm gonna focus on the general government highlights. Uh and again, there's not a lot happening here, uh but there are a few things I just wanna focus on. The first is that the fiscal twenty twenty two budget includes a uh two percent wage increase for all employees. Union and non-union of that standard. It's the last year of these collective bargaining agreements. This fall will back in negotiations with all five of our collective bargaining units. Uh the one, if there's something in here uh that is uh. A service level expansion. It is, uh I put the facilities manager back in this budget. It was cut from the fiscal twenty one budget. Um it is desperately needed and uh. It was supported by both appropriations and the Board of Selectmen last year. It's a position that has been uh talked about for many years. Is desperately needed and um it's being put in this budget. And again, it is. Being fit within that three percent target that we said we would try to stay within. The next thing is um the rec department is fully in the general fund this year. It was partially in the general fund in fiscal twenty twenty one. Um as the rec department's revenues went to zero because summer camps and all their programs were cut. Uh we have absorbed them into the general fund budget. Uh they're already back and running. They're running summer camps. Their programs getting up and running. Our approach to recreation has been, we've got a fantastic rec department and they're a hundred percent self-sufficient with. Uh program fees that pays for all the programs that they do, but it also pays for the rec director, the admin and their benefits. This uh obviously can't happen if the economy is shut down. So uh we have them in the general fund. That is something I anticipate weaning them out. Over the next couple of years, getting back to a hundred percent funded through. Program fees, but for the time being, we have fit them in that three percent as well. Last bullet on this page, uh last year we added a uh mental health referral service based on what we saw as increasing demands. Uh it's interface, it is a uh and it's through the Family Youth Services Department. In fiscal twenty one, we cut it out of the budget in fiscal twenty one. It was new, it got cut. Uh and we, it was paid for using um trust funds. Uh that's not sustainable, so that has been brought into the general fund for fiscal twenty twenty two. And by all accounts, uh I believe they have uh referred or found over sixty seven or sixty eight. Folks from Northborough has gotten them free or uh insurance-covered. Mental health counseling during this pandemic crisis. We've seen a spike in the need for with folks with mental health issues and and distresses. This uh was one area that we felt uh very strongly needed to be augmented. So we've been able to bring that into the general fund budget this year. We went through uh and we have added back a lot of the cuts or at least partially added back a lot of the cuts that were made in twenty twenty one. As the recurring revenues, both state aid and our local receipts have come back. Um the biggest one was uh we had made the library hole. We put thirty thousand dollars back in fiscal twenty one. We cut thirty thousand dollars out of the books and material budget. Uh we'd be looking at a waiver uh for the uh library um if we uh maintain those cuts. So they are back to where they were. Uh and we were able to offset that by some reductions in personnel costs as well. So it wasn't a thirty thousand dollar increase. But we were able to get that budget back. I mentioned already the thirty eight thousand five hundred dollar tuition and transportation cost for one student. Going to Norfolk Agricultural uh. The tough thing about those um students is you just never know when they sort of come out of nowhere at the eleventh hour. And it's significant, it's a significant budget impact. Um but again, uh that's the point one seven percent that we've added to take care of that. Worcester Regional Retirement, always a budget buster or a budget driver for us. Uh came in at a little over eight and a half percent. It's significant, but not as bad as it could have been. You heard the um auditor talk about our unfunded pension liability. This is the assessment that's necessary uh to get on to fully funded by twenty thirty six. One thing I just want folks at home that may be listening uh to know. Is because we talk about these unfunded liabilities for uh employees. Any group one administrative employee like myself and everybody else much on this call. Hired after nineteen ninety six is self-funding their Worcester County Regional Retirement. What the unfunded liability is really about is when they started the program. Uh many, many decades ago. Employees weren't putting in what they should have. They're paying in five percent. I pay in nine percent plus two percent uh surcharge. So uh all new employees are paying at that nine and nine and and two percent, so it's eleven percent. But these are for uh employees that were hired before that they we weren't putting off, the system wasn't putting aside enough money. So all that unfunded liability is pretty much for past sins. Any employees hired after nineteen ninety six, with the exception of police and fire, because they can retire at fifty five. But the bulk of our people are self-funding their retirement. Uh if they were hired after nineteen ninety six, I just think that's important for people to know that. Uh that we're paying for past sins, not ongoing uh generous benefits. And then last but not least on this slide, our absolute saving grace for fiscal twenty twenty two. Is that our health insurance uh came in at a very reasonable. Uh the premium renewals came in at zero percent. Our senior plans renewed at five percent. It's a smaller portion. And we originally had assumed that the teachers for the K to eight schools would increase their contribution. To match the non-school employees. But given the impacts of COVID and everything else that was going on, that was set aside for negotiation purposes. The bottom line and the net impact is that our health insurance budget uh for fiscal twenty twenty two is only going up a little over two percent. That, single-handedly is why we are okay. If that number came in at eight percent. We would be having a very, very different budget presentation. Uh I just wanna show you, because I like to show people how we have actively managed our health insurance costs over the last decade. The average is almost exactly three percent increase. I will put the last ten years of our health insurance budget increases up against any other organization in central mass. We have consistently been able to work with the employees to do plan design changes, change contributions. Consolidate carriers and just push and knuckle uh the uh carrier into a reasonable renewal. And that over that haul, that long haul has been three percent. That's a success story. When it doesn't come in reasonably. It sends this entire organization into a bit of a crisis. Because health insurance has the ability to suddenly come in with a half a million dollar program uh problem. That we need to figure out how we're going to fix. For fiscal twenty twenty two, I'm pleased to say not an issue for us. Uh last thing I wanna mention is we are continuing our capital program. And our pavement management plan, which is funded at one point one million dollars. So in the public works operating budget is roughly three hundred thousand. Uh our chapter ninety transportation funds that we get from the state, we spent a lot of time. At your March, March eighth meeting, talking with our legislative delegation about why that's the priority uh for us in fiscal twenty twenty two. Um but that's a half a million dollars. And then under the capital budget, which I will be presenting to you at your April twelfth meeting. Uh there's three hundred and ten thousand dollars. So we're, we are able to maintain our uh pavement management investment. However, as you well know, it means we're having still difficulty maintaining our roadways. And maintaining our sidewalks. And so the ability to expand and build new sidewalks uh and things of that nature is very difficult. Because we have a large base of infrastructure that needs to be maintained. And uh it's difficult to build things like new sidewalks when you have uh deteriorated sidewalks and roads that need to be taken care of first. The answer, part of the solution is that the state needs to increase their chapter ninety transportation. That's why that's our number one uh priority. Uh and it is also one of the top priorities. At the Massachusetts Municipal Association. So statewide, uh that is a uh uh transportation funding is absolutely critical for us. Not gonna spend a lot of time on this slide, other than it's exactly as it appeared. When we had our financial trend monitoring, the things that are unfavorable, state aid, economic growth revenues. I anticipate that our economic growth revenues, our local receipts will be turning around in fiscal twenty twenty two. And assuming we don't. Assuming we don't wind up hitting a slowdown in the economy and a recession on top of everything that we've been through. We anticipate that those will become favorable over the next, you know, twelve to eighteen months. Otherwise, the pension liability and the old cap, we've already talked about. Everything else is uh we're in good shape. Uh tax collections are good. We aren't seeing defaults. Uh collection rates are good. Uh we're not seeing a significant number of abatement applications just yet. Uh so so far, everything else is stable. I think again, everybody is holding their breath, waiting for the vaccines to take effect and the economy to open up. Had the vaccine uh not been released and uh the economy not starting to open up again. We'd be having a different conversation here as well. So let me get to the bottom line. So based on everything that I just presented. Uh we are assuming uh that the average single-family home tax bill would go up. Two hundred and ninety dollars. And let me explain why, because all the budgets are going up very reasonably. As we talked about at length at the financial trend monitoring uh presentation. Housing um housing uh costs are going through the roof. As you see, single-family home values are skyrocketing. And it's that shift in uh the single-family home values that's causing the bulk of this. If the single-family home values uh didn't go up and we're projecting five percent. If they didn't go up, this average single-family home tax bill will go up under the budget that I just presented to you by about a hundred dollars. So it's the shift that's taking place in the values. Uh if you read the paper, you see what's happening in Worcester. Uh it's, it's, it's everywhere. So that is the biggest factor in terms of the uh tax impact. Now, I want you to keep in mind, several slides back, we talked about. The um federal aid that's coming. Uh my anticipation is somewhere out of that four point four two million dollars. We are going to be applying some of that for revenue replacement that will obviously have an impact. I actually, uh the financial team had very long discussion about whether or not to even show this slide. Because it's not going to materialize as you see it here. But we ultimately decided that's important because we like to explain all the variables that are in motion. And how on a relative basis they ju- they drive these numbers. Because it's not just the tax rate, it's not just the value of the house or the budgets, it's all those things combined. Determine your, ultimately, your single-family home tax rate. So I would anticipate that that number will be less than that. Uh uh just as a point of reference. If you take COVID out of the picture, if you take the federal aid out of the picture, a typical year for us. For the K to eight schools, Algonquin and the general government uh departments. A typical year for us to have a level service budget to maintain. Is about a three, three and a half percent increase and that results in about a two hundred and fifty, two hundred and sixty dollar tax increase. On a typical year, just to kind of put that in context. So with that, I'm gonna wrap up. Uh you see the budget is below the confines of Prop two and a half. All the core services for the general government and the schools is being maintained. Uh we are off the additional one-time revenues in the operating budget from fiscal twenty one. We're not using stabilization or free cash reserves to balance this budget. Um we are also no longer postponing those capital projects, so we're back to investing in our. Uh buildings and our equipment in fiscal twenty twenty two. And then last but not least, uh I think this is a reasonable bu- reasonable budget. With a reasonable tax impact, all things considered. And again, I anticipate that that tax impact. Will likely be reduced as we move through this process over the next several months. So I appreciate everybody's intention and uh attention. I know that was a lot of information, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Uh just, and again, just so we're clear, the purpose of this meeting, of course, is to. Speak to the Board of Selectmen and the Appropriations Committee, which has been holding weekly meetings reviewing pieces of this budget as we go through. Appropriations Committee isn't complete yet. They have one more meeting on April first. Um and then they will vote their recommendation. So part of that process is this public hearing tonight. So. Certainly through the chair, can you answer any questions from the Board of Selectmen and Appropriations on anything I covered? But the point of the meeting is a public hearing to take public comment as well. So with that, I'm gonna stop talking and uh happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, John. That was, that was great. Um. I, when I, when I got the, the, the information today about the, the federal money, I, it took me a second to digest because that is a. That is a big number. Um I was very, very surprised by that. Um I also looked at, at the, the two hundred and sixty dollar tax increase um that you, that you made in the, in the presentation. And looked at the sixty five dollar reduction that we had in twenty one. Um you know, average that out over the last two years. Average that comes out to a hundred bucks a year um during a pandemic. That's pretty amazing, considering that the economy was completely shut down for, for three or four months. And to have our taxes only go up on average over the last two years by a hundred bucks. That's, that's pretty amazing. Um so thanks, thanks everybody for all their, their hard work on that. So first, um do any members of the Board of Selectmen have any questions for John or comments? Leslie?
Yeah, thank you, John, and thank you for explaining everything so comprehensively as usual. Uh very much appreciated. Um just to refresh, um could you define the uh? Facilities manager position and what that person would be doing?
Absolutely, because really uh one of the goals of that is to take a lot of what has been falling eh historically in my office. Uh and more recently in the DPW Director's Office, I, I have to say Scott, the only way, the only way I've been able to function. Uh and in this last year is because uh Scott has uh come into my office. And said, how can I help you? What can I take off your plate? And so I, I, I big uh thank you to him. But the facilities manager, eh uh we have all of our buildings, the town hall building, uh the library, the senior center. Uh even the public safety structure. So everything except the school buildings. Uh things happen. Uh boilers go, we make improvements, we put roofs on. Uh we bid out uh, you know, uh improvements to these structures. All of that requires somebody to put bid specifications together and to oversee that. And historically, that has always been my office. So me and back more, most recently. Uh Becca Meekins, the Assistant Town Administrator, has been working on that stuff. And so literally, eh when, this is a true story. When the boiler dies and and the steam plug pops at three o'clock in the morning, I get the phone call. Literally, I come in my sweatpants and look at it, call the contractor and I deal with it. Um I have a senior center director who is a phenomenal senior center director. And she does a great job, but she's not a facilities person. We have a geothermal system and you open the door to that heating system. It looks like the insides of a nuclear submarine. And she cannot be expected to, to manage that, right? So who manages it? Me, Becca, most recently Scott. Uh so we have people whose job it is to run and perform a service. The library director is should be focused on providing library services. Not trying to figure out why the heat isn't working or the building, there's a leak or, or if you have, right now, they have a um. Mini preservation project to fix the roof and the flashing and to do some interior repairs to the plaster. Well, the library director is trying to do that, but that's not her specialty, so it comes back to our office and then I give it to Scott. Um but no, we're all working uh to- together. And then on the, on the preventative maintenance side of things. You know, we could be doing so much more in terms of economies of scale of uh of maintenance contracts. And bidding things out across the board for all uh all of our buildings. Um and then ultimately, somebody has to stay on top of the contractors when they come to do the work. You remember the issue that we had in the front of the building of town hall? What complicated that was, that it wasn't, i- it happened twice with the build, front of the building had was compromised. I had, I had to hire a structural engineer to come in and, you know, again, I'm trying to run the town. That's not the best and highest use of my town, time. This uh I think there are, uh the other thing, let me just say one more thing. We are green communities uh um. Community, right? So we've got access to all these grant funds. Well, Becca, myself and Scott are doing insulation projects. Uh for the school department, uh but we just completed some work over at uh at the um, at the uh police station. All of these things, uh including access to grants and follow-up with grants. That's what this position should be doing. Every town around us has a full-time facilities manager, even the little town of Southborough, right next door, that's half our size. Um it's long overdue. I've been happy to do this work largely out of my office. It's not sustainable anymore. Uh and we've reached a, a. It's not sustainable anymore. And we've reached, basically, we reach a breaking point where the workload in our office is unsustainable. You know, we're looking at 65-hour weeks. I was here all day till 9:30 at night on Saturday, trying to do the budget and facilities and everything else. And we need help is the bottom line. It's a, it was a position that my predecessor put in place 12 or 13 years ago and never got funded. It's long overdue and frankly, it's in that budget and I'll, I'll happy to speak to a town meeting if anybody thinks we don't need it, but it's long, long overdue.
Yeah, go ahead, Leslie.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. I think it's important for residents to understand exactly what that position means, and it sounds like that person would need to be grant savvy as part of the job description with whoever we hire. But yeah, I think it's it's important. It's an important position, and I do think that it's great that you explained all of that.
I should mention again, if I may, through the chair, we all, that person would also work with us on the capital budget. And, you know, we have a phenomenal relationship with the Superintendent in the School Department, right? We do a lot of the capital budget and projects when they come through. So we, you know, the Melikan Middle School Project, Scott took care of that. The Green Communities improvements that we're making and and other projects, even the, even the Lincoln Street Building Project. You know, Leslie, you were, you chaired that committee and, you know, that, all that fell on mostly on me. I hired the architects to oversee the project managers, to go to the trailer meetings, you know. So this is somebody that's going to help with all that. Keep in mind now, we have acquired White Cliffs that, you know, needs daily attention. As we work through our, we're going to reuse that. This building here, Town Hall, we have a feasibility study that's happening here, so we're, we're going to, the old Town Hall for West Main Street is coming back to us in a year. That's going to be a big facilities issue for us. We have a new fire station project that's going to be moving forward in the next month. We got to figure out what we're doing and how we're maintaining the old station and the new station. There's more than enough work for somebody. In fact, they're going to be overloaded when they come with with projects and things that are going to need attention. So I'm hoping it sheds a little bit off of my plate and a little bit off of Becca's plate and a little bit off of Scott's plate.
Excellent. And I think it's great that you've explained all that, and it's now on, will be on replay for residents to to watch and listen to the full explanation. Also through the chair, the the American Rescue Plan, I know it's, everybody's thinking probably the same thing. Do you have an idea when we're going to hear more and what's the accountability going to be for that? Will they say, okay, this is going to be these specific four areas and it's going to be more paperwork, a lot of paperwork on your office's part in terms of getting back to the federal government as as far as how it's being spent?
Well, we, we were here on Saturday working on the budget and then when we got to a point where I just needed to kick things around, I think Jason went back to his office to work on reporting to the federal government on Saturday. It's overwhelming, the paperwork. The Fire Chief has been heavily involved in this, all the department heads have. So it's a lot of accounting and a incredible amount of tracking. Because if you can't show receipts and don't put it in the format that they want, you will not receive reimbursement for it. As far as I really, tomorrow morning, I serve on the Mass Municipal Association's Fiscal Policy Committee for the state. Tomorrow morning, we have a meeting just to discuss the, the American Rescue Plan, because nobody knows really what it means. There's, and there's some very limited information out there. And we just, we're not really clear on the timing. We know in the next couple of months, we'll get our first release of that money. Exactly how it can be used and the accounting for that, Administration of Finance at the state level hasn't even begun to issue their their statements that they put out for the guidance, these guidance bolt-ins about how this stuff is all supposed to work. So we do have more information. I really just don't feel comfortable getting into it because it's a, it's a moving target. It's a lot of money, and it's going to be interesting to see how it plays out. But again, it's good news for us. I don't know if it's good news for the, you know, the general taxpayer for across the country, but that's me editorializing on on that. But it's a significant amount of money. I kept saying if they would only release the original 1.3 million and let us just use it however we needed it, we would be okay. Now, I say this, but Northborough is in a better position than most. There are communities that are absolutely devastated and have, you know, had difficulty passing budgets and, you know. We're grateful that that hasn't been us. So how this money is going to come through, exactly how they're going to allow us to use it, that all remains to be seen.
Thank you, John.
The good news is our budget as presented is viable, and just like the one we passed for fiscal 2021, it was a good budget, it was, it was reasonable then, and when it came to set the tax rate, it wound up going negative. So but it can only improve our situation.
Awesome.
Thanks, Leslie. Any other questions or comments from from the Board of Selectmen? No? Questions or comments from the Appropriations Committee? Yes, Rick?
I just, I just say that most of what we've gone over tonight, we've been made aware by John at our previous meetings, except for the recent development of the new money coming from the government. But unfortunately, historically, this meeting always becomes, comes before a big push and a big voting meeting, which will happen on April 1st. But invite everyone to tune in then. That will be a big meeting. We'll be going over the town warrant. And that's where most of our decisions that we made will be the culmination of all these facts that we've gone through the rest of the year. And at this time, I'd like to ask if any of my committee members have anything to say. Tony, you have no video going, and Bob, you have no video or mic going. So I don't know how to contact this, but Bob and Janice, you have anything? Tony, your mic is on. You have anything?
No, thank you. I absorbed what John had to say, the news, the joy John had to say tonight and look forward to discussing that in future meetings of the Appropriations Committee.
And Bob D'Amico, you have no video going. Here you go. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
No, I'm good. Thanks, Rick.
If I may, through the chair, again, just to emphasize, Appropriations Committee's meeting weekly to go through all of the departmental budgets, has met with the schools regarding the K-28, the high school, police, fire, DPW. The point of this meeting is before the Appropriation Committee and and the Board of Selectmen make their recommendation votes is to allow any public comment and to take that into consideration before you do ultimately take your vote. So that would be the appropriate thing to move to at this stage if there are no other questions.
Yes, Leslie.
Yeah, there was another thing I wanted to ask about. As far as the Coronavirus Relief Fund, has there ever been a redefinition of the usage of that, or has that pretty much remained consistent? And what do you see really happening to that with regard to the American Rescue Plan?
I'm sorry, Leslie, your, your audio cut out at the beginning. I didn't hear what you, the very start of what you said.
Sorry. Okay, yeah, I just want to find out if there's, as far as the Coronavirus Relief Fund, has there been redefinition of the usage of those funds? And do you envision a change in that with the advent of the American Rescue Plan Funds?
Yeah, that's a great question. We've gotten no communication whatsoever from the federal government or the state regarding the original $1.3 million. The bulk of that money, as I said in the presentation, is really going to the School Department to to do their testing program to make sure that staff and the students are safe there. Again, we've, it's so restrictive in terms of what you can use it for. One of the things is, you know, as we, and the next on the agenda, not to jump over the public comment of this, but Kristin Black will be here to talk about the clinics, the Coronavirus Vaccination Clinics. So one of the things that 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 can be used for is to support the expenses related to running those clinics. So, you know, we'll continue to use that money up through the balance of the calendar year 2023. But so far, I don't, unless they, unless the Congress takes another vote to change the rules, which they, they took one other vote to extend the deadline to the end of this calendar year instead of the last calendar year, and they made a conscious decision not to change anything else pertaining to that money. So anything can happen, I suppose, but as of right now, there's, there's nothing changing with those, with those initial funds.
Okay. Fine. Thank you.
Thanks, John. So this is a public hearing. If there's any members of the public that would like to make any comments or have any questions, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Just to note, when you do come in, please identify yourself with your name and your address. And comments will be limited to three minutes. Also want to say too that this section of public comments is just around the budget for 2022. We will have another general public comments later in the meeting. So any comments? Please raise your hand.
There is one hand?
Yeah, I see Kerry Martnik.
Hi, it's Kerry Martnik, 16 Hemlock Drive.
Hi, Kerry.
Hello. I just had a question. It was difficult for me to tell if this is already covered. But will there be any funds set aside for the Master Plan Implementation Committee? You know, just some of the things on there, we talked about hitting straight out of the gate. Is there any funds set aside for that, whether it's downtown revitalization study or the design study or economic development, those types of things? Just wondering about how the master plan implementation could possibly be funded.
Yeah, there is, under the consultant line in the Planning Board Budget, there's $10,000 that was placed in there for consultant services. And then in the Capital Plan, we have a couple of placeholders out in that plan, since we don't know if there will be any projects that come out of the Master Plan Implementation Committee of a capital nature. So we just have some to-be-determined placeholders in there. But if there's something that comes out of there, it would come through the subsequent capital budget.
Okay, that's great. Thanks for clarifying.
You're welcome.
All right, we have one other person, Laura Zaitin.
Can you hear me?
Hi, Laura.
Hi, thank you. It's Laura Zaitin, 17 Franklin Circle. I just have a couple of questions about some articles that were approved last year for town meeting. The first question is about the sale of the old fire station at 13 Church Street. Did that get completed yet?
No, it has not. Based on the pandemic and the other emergency issues we've been dealing with, that is still on hold. Out of the grand scheme of things, that's probably the least time-sensitive and critical project that we have. So, but that is on schedule. We're going to take care of that this spring.
Okay. And then the other question, you know, and I understand if it was pandemic-related or not, but the other question is, we had approved $100,000 last year for the evaluation and feasibility study for a new town hall. And I know that there's the Old Town Hall contract that should be coming up soon, so I'm just wondering what the status was of that feasibility study.
Yep. Again, that's another project that that we're going to be focusing on as soon as we get through this town meeting. It might be helpful to remind people that I spent six months during the pandemic without an Assistant Town Administrator and without a Board of Health Agent. So we're a little bit behind on some of those other projects. That is a project, both the projects that were mentioned. The Assistant Town Administrator, Becca Meekins, is working on, in addition to many others. So glad to have her on board, and we're still scrambling to get caught up. It's been a very big press in the last, I'd say, two months dealing with vaccination clinics and and that whole situation that's taken up a good amount of time in my office and a good amount of Becca's time. So, yeah, we've got a few projects that as soon as we get town meeting behind us, we'll get moving on.
Can you just remind me the date that that Old Town Hall contract, when do we have to have that completed by?
Well, there's nothing to be completed at the, at the, under the 40-year lease, the town has the option to take the building back for a small nominal fee. And that option opens up in May of 2022.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. One more person, Kristin Wickstead.
Hi, Kristin Wickstead to Sturrock Brook Lane.
Hi, Kristin.
Hi. Was, I might have missed it because the budget conversation was, well, John's presentation was pretty long. But was there anything in the budget for an additional police officer to help with the increasing traffic in town?
No, we had a staffing study. It was done several years ago. We did a full analysis of that department, and we added several police officers at that time, and there's no plans to add police officers.
Okay, because, well, things are changing pretty fast around town, so just wondering. I had one other question too. John, you mentioned something called OPEB Trust Fund. Do you, do you know what I'm talking about? I might be pronouncing it wrong. Can you just tell me what that is?
Sure. So OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. Essentially, it's health insurance benefits for retirees. And so each year that goes by, the town, an employee accrues that benefit. And if you don't set money aside for it, it creates an unfunded liability. So several years back, we were required to start reporting the OPEB liability. This was something that happened across the entire state, actually was nationally. And so the town then put together a plan to start funding the OPEB liability, and we created a trust fund, and then we started putting in $500,000 a year into that trust fund and to offset that liability. So that, that's been ongoing for several years. When the pandemic hit and we assumed all the revenues were going to be plummeting, we postponed contributing to the OPEB Trust Fund. And that's what the point that I was making is in fiscal 2023, that's one of the things we need to get back funding on. Think of it in terms of like retirement benefit, retirement savings account, you know, you should be putting money aside for that future liability every year. But if something bad happens and you lose your job, you're not able to contribute to that. Then when things turn around, you got to get back on schedule. That's pretty much the same thing we're talking about when we refer to OPEB.
All right, yeah, thanks. That was just an abbreviation I didn't understand. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Yeah, we've spent many, many meetings over many years talking about that, so.
We got one more hand up. Laura Zaitin, again.
Hi again. So can you just give me a ballpark? When we approved that $100,000 for the feasibility study last year, how does that play in this year's taxes? Is it, or expenses versus this year's expenses? And is there a timeline, you know, that things have to be completed from when they're originally proposed?
Sure, great questions. So it doesn't play into the taxes because if we used free cash, we use one-time revenues. If you were here for the presentation by the auditor, we tend to pair up one-time expenses and capital expenses with basically budget surplus. So it was funded through budget surplus with no additional tax impact. And so that will, again, that money has been available. We just not, have not had the staff ability to get to that project, but it will play through this year. And the, and the concept would be that we'd get to making a decision about which direction we probably want to go sometime the fall of this year.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Not seeing any other questions. Last call for for comments or questions. All right. Thanks, everybody. Just want to ask Rick to Thanks, everybody. Um, just want to ask Rick to you, you'll need to adjourn.
Yes, I believe since the selectmen are dismissing us, we don't need a vote to adjourn. Am I right, John?
Yes, we should be just a closing of the public hearing.
Right, so as far as we will close our public hearing segment for now, I'd urge the other board members to stay on to hear about a health insurance agent has to say. And outside of that, I will adjourn the appropriations committee meeting for this evening, and thank you all for showing up.
Thank you, Rick. Uh, John, do I need to close public for for us?
Yeah, I, if the board would, I just, just for the record, for the board of selectmen vote to close the public hearing through a roll call vote, just so it's clear in the minutes.
Yeah. Yes, Scott.
Yeah, I moved that we closed the public hearing, the joint public hearing of of the to review the budget.
Okay.
Uh, move by Scott, second by Leslie, roll call vote, Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Leslie Ratan.
Aye.
Jason Perro.
Aye.
And I vote aye, Tim Kalen. That closes the the public hearing. Thanks, everybody. Next on the agenda, we are past the hour of eight o'clock. We have Kristen Black, health agent, giving us a COVID-19 update.
Thank you. It's nice to see all of you. Chief Parente, is it okay to share me screen? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, here we are. So I'm just going to cover, I'll make this really quick. I know it's late and John kept us all really lively with everything about finance. So I'll, I'll keep this as brief as I can to keep your attention tonight. So I'll just cover briefly our case counts where we stand right now. I'll cover some of the big reopening updates and the change to the travel advisory. And then the fun stuff, you know, talk about the successes of our local vaccination clinic and then also plans for future regional clinics in our area. So just to cover this weekend numbers again, we published this little chart or this graphic is on the town's website for the red banner. We update this, it ends up coming out Friday, Saturday. Depending on these Friday clinics have been delaying things a little bit, but thanks to Andy Dowd, our town clerk, who pushes these out as well through weekly updates on the town's website. So this was the post from last Friday, this went out. So these numbers are pulled every week out of the Mass Department of Public Health, weekly COVID update. And so you could see we're, we're just, right now, we're at around 1,100 cases. A number of active cases has dropped, you know, we're sort of hovering in that like 20 or so active cases. We've been, you know, really hanging there for two, three weeks, somewhere between mid twenties and low thirties, a number of active cases that anyone and that anybody who is considered still in isolation at 10-day period after a positive COVID-19 PCR. Our case counts of the last two weeks are a little higher than we want to see. We did bump up last week, and that's at 39 over a two-week period, ending on March 13th is just how this works on the, it ends on the Saturday. Our test positivity rate went up a little bit this week. So we are still in the yellow. I think you're all, although that doesn't really change what we can do in town. I think we're all seeing that as a trigger. We want to be like some of our neighboring communities that are out of this red moderate, or sorry, the yellow moderate zone. But we've sort of just been stuck there. Case council higher than we, some of our surrounding communities. So this graph gives you a better idea week by week, and you can see this is, you know, ending on the Saturday, March 13th. So we came down, but the previous break, we did jump back up to 27 new cases that week. And you know, we did have some cases where, you know, multiple individuals in the household, which can skew numbers for a small town pretty easily. But you know, the risk is still there. I'm hearing more stories from colleagues in my area of, you know, sort of surprising clusters. You know, everything from cheering and dance clusters of 30 kids on a team to churches who have, you know, maybe become a more, a little more relaxed with some of their activities and gatherings. And one local church, not in our town, so they had 27 or 26 cases associated direct cases. So, you know, just people that were in the parish that actually ended up with COVID. So, you know, it's really important that people, you know, continue to follow through with all the public health advice of mask wearing, social distancing, et cetera. So there we are, okay, Scott, so I'm going to just transition here quickly to just reopening updates and travel advisory updates. So it's hard to keep up, it changes every week. But just on March 22nd, so effective, so I guess that's today. I can't even keep track of the days. But we are now in phase four, step one. So if you're a Red Sox fan, get excited. There will be a season, but you'll have to be the lucky 12% to actually be able to make it into the arena. So, you know, we're going to see some large venues like ballparks and arenas open up very limited capacity. Massachusetts, some of the lowest capacity you'll see, it's a 12%. There's a lot of theories. We haven't seen anything at 12%. You know, somebody told me that was the minimum for Fenway to open. You know, I don't know the path. But, um, you know, there's this really low trigger, so we're going to have some of the lowest capacity of venues. And we're also going to see that gathering limits for the venues and public settings has also increased. So now we're currently at 100 people in indoors and 150 outdoors. So I know a lot of people are thinking about, you know, those outdoor concerts and other things like that. So that's our current limit now. I have no crystal ball. I can't tell you what that's going to look like in the middle of the summer when North Row wants to hold a concert, but that's, you know, our new update is 100 indoors, 150 outdoors. And that's for a public venue or event, event venue that's totally separate from a private residence. So again, I want to remind everybody those private backyard gatherings are at a maximum of 25 people in the backyard. So if you're having your fire pit and planning, it's 25 and then indoor gatherings at 10 people. So you know, as you know, different holidays coming around the corner, you still do have those indoor house gatherings of 10 people. For any of you thinking about weddings, you know, big deal, the atmosphere is going to be open at weddings. But you know, and we're also going to see some of these overnight summer camps open. But again, there's still additional limitations with mask wearing and ability to socially distance. Probably one of the biggest updates that impacts most of us who, you know, in New England states, they like to travel. People have been pretty aware that Massachusetts have one of the strictest travel orders around. Even if you went up to New Hampshire to maybe go visit a friend for two hours, you would be required to follow the mass travel order previously. So as of today, it's currently advisory. What does that mean? That means it's not forcible with penalties, but it's a recommendation or an advisory to follow the order. So the map, I understand, is totally removed. So there's a red or all the colors. There are some major changes, yeah, the travel advisory now, no longer the travel order. There are two important exceptions that will impact a lot of people. One is if you're vaccinated and you're at least two weeks out from your first shot for Johnson and Johnson or two weeks out from your second shot for the Pfizer and Moderna, you're exempt, you know, or you, you know, there's an exception from you from having to follow the travel order advisory. And, you know, additionally, there's a new exception that we had, some other states had, and it's caused a lot of confusion. But now if you leave for less than 24 hours, so you visited, you know, family up in New Hampshire, you maybe, you know, saw a family member up there, but you just did a pay trip. You wouldn't be subject to the travel advisory as it's written now. So those are some pretty big changes for a lot of people that are, you know, have family all throughout New England. And just from the schools, I'm sure some of you have children or know of kids in this school district. Today was a big moment. K through five went back to full in-person. Now again, students and families have the ability to stay enrolled in the remote academy. But for all of those other learners that were hybrid are now going to be full in-person. And we're going to see the other grades, grade six through 12, move to that full in-person model on April 26th. So the school's been working really hard, the medical advisory team working on the protocols and the screening program and and everything else they can do to really reduce and minimize risk at this. So again, you know, you've all seen this graphic plenty of times. These is the, you know, same graphic we've been looking at for the last couple of months. And so, you know, we had these like ballpark dates at the bottom of the graphic, you know, phase three was sometime between April and June. And boom, here we go. We actually have some real dates to finally look at. So I think it's important to note, you know, on this new graphic, you can see on the right where these eligibility categories come in. So what everybody says, you know, when is everybody eligible? So 60 plus is eligible on March, I'm sorry, April 19th. So that's not too far away. So and the reason it's 16 plus is that the vaccines are not approved for ages 16 and over. So Pfizer is, you know, the 16 and over, and so that's why we're falling into that category. There's currently testing for younger children, but you don't anticipate that vaccine approval until probably sometime in the fall. And so again, we opened today with individuals who are 60 plus and workers in certain sectors. And there's a big, long list, so transit, grocery, utility, food, agriculture, sanitation, public works, public health workers. All of those individuals are now eligible today. And then starting on April 5th, anybody 55 and over and any individuals with one of those certain medical conditions listed on the state website. So one thing I want to point out with all these changes, it's up to keep track of them and everybody wants to be the first in line. So it's really important to know that, I think it was just last week or the week before, the state launched a pre-registration program. That's why I have that link on the left side of the screen. So if you just Google mass.gov and pre-register, it will pop right up, probably your first Google search. And so that that pre-registration is great because I think what people were really tired of was waiting in line or getting on and entering all their details. The appointments gone or, you know, spending their entire Thursday at the computer. And so the way Massachusetts has done this is they've partnered with Google, is my understanding. And they created this pre-registration feature that is automatically linked to all the appointments at the mass vaccination site. So currently we have seven max vaccination sites. So before you jump on on Thursday and hope to score that great ticket, you know, to get your vaccine at Gillette, you no longer can do it through that method. So all of the appointments at all the mass vaccination are filled through this pre-registration. So what happens is if you register online, you put in your information, you don't have to currently be eligible to register. It appears like it's going to be a first come, first served, and you'll get an email whenever an appointment's available, you're next in line. So I think it's based off of when you pre-register. So go ahead and do it right away. When an appointment's available, you'll get an email or you can select to get a text. And it's going to say you have 24 hours to accept this appointment. The appointment is going to link you to your closest mass vaccination site in the area. So again, it's currently the seven mass vaccination sites, but we anticipate that other regional sites are going to be added into that same pool where appointments will automatically be distributed to anybody who pre registers. So I just pre-registered my children today. Their age is six to 13. They're not eligible anytime soon. But it only takes about two minutes. And you know what? If that puts us at the front of the line when their group opens and an appointment's available, I'll be really happy I did that, you know, many months before. So something to keep in mind. And there are other sites and appointments, you know, the Wegmans, the pharmacies, the, you know, there's the site in Marlboro. All those other ones are found at that vaxfinder.mass.gov. And so you won't find them through the pre-registration. They may be added at a future date. So what I just tell for everybody, everybody should be registered. It doesn't hurt. You can always say no to the appointment. It doesn't prevent you from scheduling an appointment elsewhere and then continuing to monitor that vaxfinder.mass.gov. And we have some other helpful hints for individuals who are really struggling. We have some really savvy people in town. And we can help to pair you up too. So if people are just struggling, the health department's a great resource. I want to say, you know, our resourceful teachers, the PTOs or PTGs of the world, they, they managed to register pretty much all of their teachers. I would say over 80% in a two-week period because they just knew how to do the system. And we have individuals who have offered to help others. So if you're struggling and frustrated, just realize the town is here as a resource and you can reach out to the health department. We'll see if we can help you. We also are maintaining currently a call list. We're working with some of the local clinics to provide a call list in the event they have last minute cancellations. So we can help fill those with our residents. And so just our updates on our vaccine clinics in town. It's been, I guess, a two-month endeavor so far, right, to parent these, right, him man? We're having a lot of fun doing this with so many town employees and wonderful volunteers in our community. So to date, we've vaccinated 720 North Row residents and employees. And these were individuals who are eligible. This included nine homebound individuals that were already vaccinated, and that was with fire department staff. We've actually vaccinated 721. Just last week, we snuck in a 101-year-old Chisbury resident that just couldn't find a place for a vaccine. So there are a few people where, you know, we work together as a community and we've also assisted them as well. So again, to date, we've had six vaccination clinics all held at our senior center for eligible individuals. One of these did include a clinic for affordable housing residents. And we have three second-dose clinics remaining, and that last clinic will be had on April 16th. So we have the site currently set up, but we're phasing out. And so last week, another update, I believe, Board of Selectmen will copy, we received our preliminary approval for a regional vaccine site. And we're still awaiting, you know, allocation and official start date. So I was emailing with the Assistant Commissioner at DPH today, Janet Ferguson. And we're still aiming as a possible earliest start date would be the week of April 5th, being putting in the order next week. We're not quite sure what we would get. It really depends on what's available. So it'll be any of the three, J and J. Obviously, everybody wants that. It's no second dose scheduling. And then we also have Pfizer and Moderna. So we're prepared to take what we can to offer this to our residents. So again, as a reminder, this regional site is proposed at the Doubletree Hotel in Westborough, which has already been used by the town of Westborough for their first responder clinics. And the towns that are included in this collaboration are Ashland, Boylston, Holliston, Huffington, North Row, South Row, West Row. So again, why are we doing this? Well, one, we want to make vaccines easy for residents to get to. Not everybody wants to travel to a mass vaccination site. You know, there's some talk of can we offer clinics in evening hours or Saturdays? You know, we want to get everybody. We don't want to hear, I never could find an appointment. I can't leave my job. You know, we want our community to be safe and have convenient options. And so by offering a regional site, there's the investment of town resources to get it up and running. It's all reimbursable through FIBA. But we are allowed to withhold up to 25% of the state's allocation just for our people. And so it's a great way that hopefully we can get them first, first through the line or offer special clinics for people in our area. Because everyone across the state of Massachusetts is really struggling to find appointments, you know. And even if it's an extra week, you know, it's an extra week for someone. They can't hug their grandkids. And so we really want to make sure that we can offer it as soon as we can and conveniently as we can for all of our residents to really improve the health outcomes in our community. And so the exciting news, why do you want to get vaccinated? So I think since we last, I presented to the Board of Selectmen, the CDC did provide finally some guidance for fully vaccinated people, you know, why do I want to do it? What can I do? So the link's on the screen here. So this was released on March 8th. And so again, this is for fully vaccinated people. So if you just got your first shot of a two-dose series, you, you weren't fully vaccinated. You haven't reached that full level of immunity. And so we're looking at two weeks after your second vaccine for a two, two-dose series. And if you're fully vaccinated, you can now gather indoors with other fully vaccinated people without wearing a mask or social distancing, which is a huge change, you know, hopefully a lot of our seniors that are in that status can begin connecting again with fully vaccinated friends and enjoying a meal together. The other difference here is now you can, if you're fully vaccinated, you can gather indoors with unvaccinated people from one household without masks, unless any of the people you're gathering with are at increased risk for severe illness. So this is the big grandparent change here. So for example, my parents are vaccinated, so they're proud grandparents. My children are not vaccinated. We've been doing the whole masks and not seeing them, only seeing them outside. And now this is really allowed for my family, my parents to be protected, the grandkids to come over and to be able to share a meal with them. Because we know the most at-risk individuals, the grandparents have been vaccinated. And so we're allowed to do that mixing of one household that's unvaccinated. And again, you know, there's, if you've been around with someone who's had COVID, so you were exposed, but you're vaccinated, you, you aren't necessarily required anymore to quarantine as long as you're not showing symptoms. So lots of changes there. But again, your friendly health department's here to answer questions about specific scenarios and will help you understand this guidance. And now that we have that, we've sent it off to many of the individuals in town we vaccinated, just to make sure everybody understands the rules and they're taking proper precautions. And I think that's all I have for you today. Questions?
Thank you, Kristen. That was very informative as usual. Very excited to get to get a, see that the vaccinations are being rolled out for for larger portions of the population and that the the regional vaccination site looks like it's going to be moving forward. So that's all very very exciting. Anybody have any, any questions? Scott?
Yeah, thanks, Tim. So Kristen, you know, thank you, you know, once again to you and the extended team, the pivot that you all made when the local sites were, were not going to be allowed any longer to go regional and take the lead on that effort is phenomenal. So thank you so much for that and to everybody that's, that's been worked on that, the other towns to put that together. I think you really demonstrated that between us and Hoppington and the other towns, you know, we have a good plan, right? So it was great to see that that was approved.
Leslie?
Thank you very much, Kristen. I have a question and a comment. Your very last bullet said something like, if you've been fully vaccinated, but you think you may have been around someone who has had COVID or has COVID, you don't need to worry as much about that. Is that because they've kind of come out with studies saying that people Is that because they've kind of come out with studies saying that people who have been vaccinated can't really, or there's a low um. Probability that they would shed the virus? Does that have to do with that?
So I think it's part of your question, Lizzie, it's probably about the whole silent spreader thing people are really worried about. So if you're vaccinated, can somebody give it to you and then you can unknowingly give it to others, but not show symptoms? So there's a lot of confusion over that. Um, you know, I unfortunately, like I haven't yet read a study that answers it perfectly clearly, you know, and and that would say like the probability is. Two percent. All we can know that is that um, CDC did update their guidance. So you know, it seems to me without, I don't have all the numbers to show you. That they're fairly confident that if you are fully vaccinated, you know, it it won't, you're protected. In that we don't anticipate that you would need to, you know, that you would come down with it and likely spread it to others. Um, so that risk of the silent spreader hasn't totally been explained or. Um, sort of washed away, but I think CDC is confident enough that it doesn't pose a risk for continued spread. So if you are fully vaccinated and you come into contact with a known COVID positive person. You can continue to go about your life. You don't have to hide away at home and fear that you're going to develop it and spread it to others. As long as you're not symptomatic. So I think we're going to have more information on that to really like solidify that statement. But at the end of the day, um, the Mass Department of Public Health has accepted it. And so um, we have both the CDC, the federal level and the state level, the Mass Department of Public Health, who feel the risk is low enough. That they're no longer advising vaccinated individuals to quarantine.
Okay, that's great. I appreciate that. Um, and also I just think the town news that went out um, with all the information. Um, last week and also included a lot of good links uh, that I think people could. Um, drag over to their desktop and and keep handy. I think all all that is fantastic information because I think it's. You know, you, i-if you're watching the television news and they say, hey, this is, this particular age group is eligible now. They don't really provide a lot of information. Okay, okay, what next? What am I supposed to do now? So I think that's very, very helpful. And I do think that especially in these times, I think the more town news, the better. So I think, I think people like those updates very much, very informative. So, thank you.
We'll keep them coming. Big thanks to Handy Dowder. Town clerk is fabulous at pushing it out. So. I often get press releases straight from DPH. So again, you know, we probably should keep reminding people, like signing up for those town, you know. E-newsletter and and alerts is really the place to stay up to speed.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Any other questions or or comments for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen. As usual, it was very informative, very, we all very much appreciate all the work that you're putting in and the information that you provided. It uh, it really does make a difference and and. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thanks, everybody. Have a great night.
Thanks, Kristen. Uh, so next on the agenda, we have uh, reports. Uh, first up, Scott Rogers.
Yeah, thank you, Tim. Uh, so on March seventeenth, uh, the community fairs had their meeting. Uh, their current event, the munchy madness uh, continues until April fifth. Uh, you can participate by dining in or taking out any of the Northborough restaurants and be eligible to receive a prize. More details are available on their website and Facebook page. Uh, the committee continues to plan out, you know, events nearly uh, every month. Uh, so watch for upcoming events, including uh, a big one around town cleanup, excuse me. Also attended the combined school committees uh, meeting on March seventeenth. Uh, they welcomed um, welcomed uh. Um, Maurice Myrie as the new chief information officer, chief information security officer. Uh, everyone was just excited to see him join the school administration, administration team. Uh, that meeting also included updates from the coalition on equity uh, around professional development, projects. And other efforts to promote cultural awareness and diversity. On March twelfth, uh, attended the Mass Municipal Association presentation on civil discourse. Uh, that was a reminder that um, here at the select board, you know, we set the tone and for conduct. And that tone flows off into other boards and committees. But I think we do a a good job of that. And and the department heads and town staff continue to be very conscientious about holding members uh, to these standards. Um, there have been some slips recently and steps taken to correct. So this is something that collectively all board, committee and commission members should keep in mind. Um, however, um, email and social media channels have gotten much worse lately. With some quite toxic statements being made. Uh, so toward that end, I encourage everyone. To treat their neighbors and fellow volunteers with respect, please. That ends my report.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Leslie?
Okay, uh, the first thing I'd like to do is wish good luck to the students, parents and staff. As they return to in-person learning. That's a big step. Um, it's kind of a nice feeling that instead of feeling like we're going, heading into something, we're actually heading out of something. Um, that's very exciting for everybody. So I do want to wish everyone luck there as that begins. Um, also on the Northborough Food Pantry page, there was a nice um, post and I would like to read that. Uh, says, "Thank you to Girl Scout Troop three zero one five six led by Karen Schultz and Kathy Kaminsky." They recently disbanded their group after nine years together as the girls headed off to high school. The girls had supported their community and the Northborough Food Pantry during their time at St. Bernadette's. And they wanted to continue that support by donating their remaining funds of nineteen hundred dollars to the food pantry. That's amazing. That's incredible and that deserves uh, mention. So I want to thank uh, those troop leaders. And those Girl Scouts who obviously made the most of their time with that particular troop and think enough. Um, to have the money spent that way as they disband. So I want to thank them very much for that. And there's something else that was on social media that I saw. Um, a shout out to the DPW. I didn't know if Scott had seen this. Uh, asked it to also the the police department as well. Uh, removing a dangling limb from over Route one thirty-five and the tree in front of our house. A crack vertically in the last storm was quite large and heavy. Uh, this resident says, "I called because I was afraid of falling on passing cars." The crew was here at the dot eight AM with equipment and four to five guys and a police officer to control traffic. They had the whole job done in about twenty minutes and cleaned up all the branches in my yard. Great work, guys, and thanks so much. You do this town proud. So I just want to make sure that everybody heard that.
Thank you, Leslie. I'll echo that to the highway department for sure.
That, that's wonderful. Thank you very much to your, you and your department and also to Chief Libber and his department. So. Everybody came together, made someone happy. So, and safe. Thank you very much. Uh, that ends my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Jason?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, as people may have noticed, I don't have a lot of spare oxygen tonight beyond roll call votes. Uh, I'm feeling a little under the weather. Want to thank Tim for conducting the meeting tonight and uh, giving me a little bit of a break. Um, and the only other thing I want to say tonight is uh, just uh, thank you to all the town staff assembled here and other departments. Um, as you've seen from the agenda here, we've had the um, town audit completed and pristine as always. Uh, preparation of the town budget, uh, which took enormous amount of work, uh. Uh, given the delay uh, with the state uh, proceeding and John being here through the weekend to try to wrap that up. Completion of the town warrant, uh, and town uh, uh, election warrant uh, uh, to get those prepared for us this evening. Kristen with her uh, update on on uh, the uh. Circumstances of uh, COVID nineteen and the preparations being undertaken, the fact that we're going to be setting up regional uh, center here to to do vaccinations. It's been a very, very heavy demand on on all of these town staff members. Um, I don't think people really fully understand. The workload that has been placed upon them and I just want to bring that uh, you know. To light here and 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 offer my thanks for all, all that, the extra work they've been doing well beyond. You know, what would be considered the routine work of their uh, or normal work of their job descriptions. Everyone is stepping up, everyone's putting in extra effort and uh, I certainly do, do appreciate it. So thank you all. That ends my report.
Thank you, Jason. Um, just to echo what what uh, Jason just said, it's the the. The amount of work, it's it's not, it's not so much the, the amount of work. Um, it's the, the, the quality and the outcome that I find most uh, impressive year after year. I know the, the, just from my professional experience, the tremendous amount of effort it takes. To financially manage and run an organization with a seventy-two million dollar budget is no small undertaking. So. Um, you know, my hat's off to, 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 to John and um, Jason, uh, just absolutely amazing job. I know that the, the. Federal programs um, can be an absolute nightmare to deal with, the amount of. Um, paperwork in detail that they ask for. Um, so I commend you on. Um, the work to, to um, get that process started. Had a meeting last week with the uh, Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Um, we're making uh, great progress. Um, the Diversity and Inclusion Committee did um, was. Uh, released a, a statement um, that I'd like to read, but first of all, I just want to thank all the members of the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Uh, for their work over the weekend to to get the statement uh, put together. The statement's available on the, the town website and on various uh, Facebook pages. Um, I'm just going to, to read the statement. Um, "To all members of the Northborough community, the Asian-American and Pacific Islanders community, uh, AAPI has experienced. And continues to deal with a tremendous rise of physical assaults and harassment since the beginning of the pandemic. There have been thirty-eight hundred acts of violence and discrimination against the AAPI. On Tuesday, March sixteenth, the AAPI community, community was targeted in Atlanta. Resulting in the murder of six Asian women and two additional victims. These women were Asian, but they were also mothers, sisters, daughters and friends. Anti-Asian racism has long persisted prior to COVID nineteen. We are deeply saddened by the acts of violence against the AAPI communities. We stand firmly in solidarity with our AAPI neighbors, friends, coworkers, classmates and family. And condemning all forms of hate and violence. It's unconscionable that these acts of violent racism continue to take place. As a community, we take steps every day to better understand how we can be more supportive of those who have been historically marginalized. The effort needs to can, to include all members of our town. Words of support, healing and prayer are appreciated, but they are not enough. Anti-Asian bigotry and racism in any form that is not actively opposed is a threat to everyone, no matter who you are. Every resident in Northborough has the opportunity to make a difference. One of the most effective ways is to stay informed and educate yourself and your family. On the website, we've listed a, a, a list of resources that that people can access to to educate themselves. Um, so we just asked that, that people listen to different perspectives, get information from a variety of sources and be open-minded. Collectively, we can support and uplift those that have experienced racism. And it's a statement and that ends my report. So uh, you're on to public comments. Um, and again, if, if the, the sexual, just general public comments.
Do you want to invite John if he has anything?
Oh, sorry. John, you have, you're, you're muted.
You, you listened to me enough tonight, no report.
Okay, sorry about that, John.
That's okay. I would have chimed in if I had something.
Um, so for public comments, again, I just ask, um, please state your name and your address. And all comments will be kept to three minutes. Uh, anybody that has a public comment, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands. Last call. All right.
I missed there, raised your one hand.
One hand? All right, one hand. Uh, Kristen Wixted.
Hi, me again. I, um, I was part of a group of people who's, I, I signed a petition. I just wanted to make sure you all got that.
It has been received.
We received the petition.
About the ZBA appointments? Okay, and um, just wanted to check in, make sure that got received. Okay, thanks.
Any other public comments? All right, on to new business. Um. Memorandum of Understanding Propose Alterations to Layout of King Street. John?
Uh, actually, that would be Fred Litchfield.
I'm promoting.
Oh, sorry. He'll be right in. Uh, town engineer Fred Litchfield.
I've also promoted the uh, property owner and his uh, attorney.
Hi, Fred.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. Um, I'm here to talk to you tonight about the memorandum of understanding. This uh, goes back about three years. Uh, the developer, uh, ZHS Trust. Received a special permit for a assisted living facility on King Street from the zoning board of appeals. And one of the requirements of that uh, special permit was that they improved the access from Southwest cutoff to the site. Um, they also own some land at thirty-eight King Street, which the ZBA had asked them to pursue access with Mass DOT. And the town to see if that could improve the access. Uh, currently, King Street is a short street. Um, we've had concerns about some speeding and some other issues out there because of the angle that uh. Drivers come off of Southwest cutoff onto King Street. So it seemed a, a good idea to take this opportunity where the landowner owned both sides of King Street to work with him. To get an improved uh, access plan. What you have before you is a, the memorandum of understanding that kind of outlines. Uh, his understanding of what his responsibility is and when things would happen. The way we have uh, laid it out, the Scott Chaperantier and I worked with the developer as well as Mastute. Fine-tune this plan over the course of a, a year or two. So what it does is it, he has that property at thirty-eight King Street. He'll build that driveway across his private property and then come back to the town, asking us to. Uh, alter the layout of King Street so that it then uh, takes a sharp turn. From King Street out onto Southwest cutoff at a point about two hundred and fifty feet. North of where King Street now intersects with Southwest cutoff. Um, at a much safer location for visibility and access. If you've ever driven by there, you know that uh, you really got to turn your head in order to see the cars coming. Behind you and um, you're heading on almost into head-on into traffic. It's a fairly dangerous. And with the increased traffic that's expected at the facility, um, it does seem prudent to. Work with the developer to do this uh, at this time. Um, I'm happy to answer questions. As you can see, Rashid Shake, the developer is here along with his attorney. Spencer Holland, if there are any questions for them or for, for me on the engineering part of the plan, be happy to answer them.
Uh, any questions? What, Leslie?
Yeah, um, thank you very much. Uh, Fred, thank you for being here and also Rashid and uh, his attorney. Um, uh, at, at what point was the fire department maybe consulted? Just thinking in terms of ingress and egress and the ability to get in there with fire trucks and uh, so forth.
Yeah, if I may, through the chair. Um, Leslie, we have been involved in, in it from the very beginning. Uh, from the, from the very, from the very first proposal uh, for the land to all the way up through um. The streets Rashid had come in, we've talked several times. Uh, along with Fred and uh, yep, we've been, and I think the police have been involved as well from the very beginning.
That's great.
Through the chair, through the design process, there's been um, uh, two review periods for town staff, uh, fight of fire police. Uh, engineering DPW. One was during the zoning board of appeals process. Um, that then resulted in the condition that they have to have improved access and and that improved access needs to be approved. By Mass DOT. The second step, step uh, in the design process was developing.
The second step in the design process was developing that secondary access design with DOT, the applicants engineer, myself, Fred, fire department. As Fred indicated, it was a long process getting through the state reviews, our reviews, fire department reviews, so that the final layout met the needs of the community, the residents, as well as the neighbors. There was some public outreach that was done along the roadway itself to reach out to some of the neighbors and get their thoughts, and it was nothing but positive responses received. So what you have before you is a memorandum of understanding that says we will, as a town, support the new layout if you, as the developer, build it in accordance with the requirements outlined here.
Well, thank you.
I just would like to point out through the chair that the MOU has gone through town council, and it is ready for your execution, should you so decide to. It also involves town meeting action down the road in order to alter that layout. So this gives the developer the most assurance that we can, that we will go to town meeting. We can guarantee the result, but we will go to town meeting and present it for approval at that time.
Scott?
Yeah, so thanks. And Fred, I was just going to say thank you for, you know, the package that, you know, clearly puts together what was a project from a couple of years ago, right? And the way it was described here and assembled made it really easy for us to catch up and understand what was going on and what was being proposed. And the fact that the MOU is ready to go, really appreciate all the parties getting together to put that and have it ready for us.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Yes, Rashid? You're muted.
Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Just short and sweet, honestly, I want to thank everyone. I must tell you that these guys, they do a lot of due diligence, and they've done their job. And they basically have gone through, you know, over and over and over. So on one hand, I really thank them for all of their patience and hard work. On the other hand, we are anxious to make the next step because we have spent significant time.
Understand. Spencer?
Just to briefly reiterate Rashid's comments, I can attest that over the course, it's been almost, we're almost at the three-year anniversary since the ZBA decision. And in that period, Rashid has been both tenacious in moving this forward, but also incredibly patient and deferential to the town. We've incorporated all of the comments and requests that we've received along the way. And so this MOU incorporates all of those. It includes a lot of additional work on project proponents' part that would not in earlier drafts, including some of the work on converting the existing intersection into a one-way once the new intersection is completed. And so this project will create significant safety benefits to the town and at no cost to the town. And just, I think that tonight's budget proposal underscores the value of that, you know, perhaps now more than ever. And so I thank Fred and everyone else for their comments throughout this process. And this MOU provides a very clear roadmap of the next steps to seeing this through to fruition.
Thank you. And just on a personal note, when I was a kid, part of my paper route was on King Street, and that intersection is a nightmare. So even on a bicycle with a bag full of newspapers, you don't want to be sticking your nose out under Route 20. So I think the proposal makes a lot of sense. Any other comments or questions? Do I have a motion? Leslie?
I just want to say I'm excited about this. I think that I look at that spot, that location, King Street, kind of being an entryway, entry point to our downtown area. And I just think that it will really improve. The look of that area would be very, I'm sure, very pleasant to look at, and obviously safer as well. But I just always feel like that bend down toward the business area is very important. And I think that will be a vast improvement. So thank you very much for working on that.
Thank you. So do I, oh, Scott?
Yeah, so, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the memorandum of understanding between the town and Rashid Shake, trustee of ZHS Trust, for the proposed alteration of the layout of King Street.
Moved by Scott Rogers and seconded by Leslie Rutan. Roll call vote, Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan? Jason Perrow?
Aye.
And I, Tim Kalen, vote aye. So the memorandum of understanding is approved. Thank you, everybody. Thanks for all the work that you've put into this.
Thanks, everyone. Thank you.
Next up, we have approve, execute, orn for May 1, 2021 Annual Town Meeting.
To the chairman? So included in your packet, and for those at home, if they're interested, is the draft of the warrant, which hopefully after your vote this evening will be the final warrant. Nothing has really changed since your last meeting. There are 39 articles. The only thing that we've added is, I believe, the last time it came to you, it did not have the text for Article 39, which is the Compression Brake Prohibition Bylaw, also known as the Jake Brake Bylaw. The police chief had done some research and had compiled some information, and town council reviewed that. And so the final language that's in here is what would go to town meeting. Essentially, what it would do is it would allow any neighborhood or the board of selectmen to, by simply holding a public hearing, place that prohibition on any roadway other than a state roadway, which we don't control. So that would give you the authority to do that. In terms of the warrant, what's up on the website right now? It has the budget information, the budget tables, as well as the handouts for the Stormwater Management Proposed Bylaw and Personnel Bylaw. So it is a complete package for this point in the process. Since we are going to be holding town meeting outdoors, I would like to complete another package similar to the one that we did last year. That's a little bit more robust. It has not only the warrant articles, but the motions and the handouts, the information. It'll have the report from the Financial Planning Committee, the report from the Appropriations Committee, and all of that information compiled. So we'll work on that over the next couple of weeks. But in terms of your vote this evening, your vote is to vote, to post and execute the warrant, and that is the warrant itself, all the supporting materials and the motions and all that be in a subsequent document that we'll send to the printer and make sure it's available for everybody at town meeting. So can I answer any questions you have about the draft of the warrant that's before you? But again, the articles are the ones that we reviewed at your last meeting, so there shouldn't be any surprises in this document.
Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Tim. A quick question on Article 39 for the compression brake. And just in terms of establishing then an area that those would be prohibited, is there then signage to indicate to drivers that they're in? So would part of putting that in place would then be approving the signage and all that as well?
Yeah, if you, if the board, you have to hold a public hearing as drafted. If you choose to put that prohibition in place, then similar to the parking ban that you approved on Bartlett a few meetings back, then in order to enforce that, we need to post it, and then once it's posted, the police department can then enforce it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve and execute the May 1, 2021 Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second?
Moved by Leslie Rutan, seconded by Scott Rogers. Roll call vote, Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan? Jason Perrow?
Aye.
And I, Tim Kalen, vote aye. Those are approved. Next on the agenda, approve, execute warrant for May 11, 2021 Annual Town Meeting. John?
So in your packet is a warrant for the election. It was prepared by the town clerk for your approval this evening and is for the May 11 local election, which would begin at 7:00 AM.
Any questions or comments? Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move the board vote to approve and execute the May 11, 2021 Annual Town Election Warrant.
Second?
Moved by Scott Rogers, seconded by Leslie Rutan. Roll call vote, Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Jason Perrow?
Aye.
And I, Tim Kalen, vote aye. Those are approved. May 11, 2021 Annual Town Election. Any other business to come before the board tonight?
No other business this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I just want to thank everybody for bearing with me with my first meeting chairing. I hope it wasn't as painful as I think it was. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Uh, Ms. Chair, I will move to adjourn.
Yes, that'd probably be a good idea. Roll call vote, Scott Rogers?
Aye.
Leslie Rutan?
Aye.
Jason Perrow?
Aye.
And I, Tim Kalen, vote aye. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.
Thank you. Take care.
Have a good night.
Thank you.